Yeah, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, council. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I'm gonna ask councillor Crick to start us off in a prayer.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity we have to live in such a great land and in a great place in Alberta, in the MD of Bonneville, and, Lord, we ask for your wisdom and your guidance in this meeting today, and your protection over all the staff that are out working on the various roads and projects across the MD of Bonneville today, in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you councillor Crick. I have an agenda before us, is there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Reeve. Administration would recommend adding to infrastructure services 9.5.2, weather radar access road. We would also propose adding, under council invitations, 9.6.2, Cold Lake Chamber of Commerce Appreciation BBQ. And under closed session, a 12.1 Munich Court Trail Maintenance Agreement.
Anything else from council? Okay, seeing none, we need a motion to drop, adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we improve the agenda as presented with the additions.
Thank you councillor Crick for making that motion, all in favor? Oh, call for the vote? Sorry. Ben, I guess he didn't hit that button or something. There we go, Carrie, thank you. Need the adoption of the minutes, regular meeting, June 8th, 2022?
I'll make that motion, see no errors.
Okay, thank you Deputy Reeve Fadiev for making that motion. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. Carrie? Any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none, we'll go on to development applications, 7.1.
Morning Reeve, councillors.
Good morning.
This is development permit 2022-D-095 for Gabrielle and Candice Lavoie, who are in attendance. The applicant is applying for a southwest side yard variance from 15 feet to five feet for a covered deck addition to an existing detached garage. The property is located at Chicken Hill Lake Multi-Lot Subdivision. Adjacent properties are residential lots and municipal reserve. The applicant would like to construct a covered deck onto an existing detached garage. A variance is required due to the location of the garage and the size of the addition requested. Currently, the garage does not conform with the required 15-foot setback and is considered a non-conforming building, as per section 24 of the land use by law. As a non-conforming building, no additions or alterations are allowed unless to make the building conforming. If the variance is granted for the addition of the covered deck, the building would be deemed conforming. Setbacks are measured from the wall of the building, but the applicant would be required to ensure that the roof of the covered deck does not encroach into the neighboring lot. Currently, the adjacent lot is undeveloped with a cleared area in the middle of the lot. There are trees between the cleared area and the applicant's proposed covered deck addition location. The applicant provided sketches of the proposed covered deck and can be modified to ensure no encroachment issues arise. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on June 7th, 2022, and we received no response. Recommendation for development application 2022-D-095 is refuse the request for south side yard variance from 15 feet to five feet for a covered deck addition to the existing garage as their request exceeds the 25% allowable as per Part III, Section 20.1 of the Land Use Bylaw number 1667. Additionally, the garage is currently a non-conforming building, and as per Section 24E of the Land Use Bylaw, a non-conforming building may continue to be used, but the building may not be enlarged, added to, rebuilt, or structurally altered. Alternatively, council may choose to approve the request for a southwest side yard variance from 15 feet to five, or three feet, for a covered deck addition to the existing detached garage if, as per Part III, Section 20.3 of the Land Use Bylaw, if the proposed development would not unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties with the following conditions. As per Section 71.4 of the Land Use Bylaw, the minimum setback shall be front yard 7.6 meters, northwest side yard, or sorry, northeast side yard 4.5 meters, rear yard 7.6. An approved building permit is required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Safety Codes Act. Building materials shall not be, shall be contained onsite in a waste bin or covered in closed trailer as per Section III of the nuisance bylaw, and building location to be staked out by an Alberta Land Surveyor, CET, or other approved designation in Alberta, and submitted for approval by the MD of Bonneville prior to the commencement of construction.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to start you during, initially, because you said 15 feet to five feet.
Sorry, three feet.
And then you changed it to three, so, that was just my first comment. You know, again, this is a tough one, because I really wish this hadn't even come to, or to council. The garage was built non-compliant, because it was too close to the property. And now they, now they want to add a deck that's even closer. And so I, you know, I really do have issues with it, I wish it wasn't even here.
I do want to remind council, the previous council and the municipal, or, and the administration had a discussion about possibly amending the land use by law to allow lots that are under one acre, substandard lots, to have this five-foot setback automatically, not just the lots that are under the 20,000 square foot mark.
And that's fair, but you're asking for three feet now, and, you know, it was non-compliant when they built. I, I mean, I wish, I wished, you know, we had, we haven't, we didn't do it, but I wish then we would have checked the garage, we didn't, but, so now we're gonna ask for, you know, a variance to three feet for a deck, and I just, it's like a double whammy, right? Like, you know, I just hate it when, when folks kinda, sort of maybe don't, don't like the rules or whatever, or they miss something or whatever, but to do it twice is like, I'm not sure. So, sorry, Mr. Reeve, but it's not really appropriate. Deputy Reeve Fadiev?
Good morning, when was the property built?
Through the chair to councillor Fadiev. I am not sure when the garage was built, but I am aware that the applicant did buy the property with the garage already on it.
So they bought it as, as is?
As is.
Councillor Crick?
So the adjacent landowner was sent a letter, though, and they didn't have any concerns about the going to three feet away?
That is correct, there was no response received.
Mr. Reeve, is that three feet setback from a neighboring lot or from the, the other side where there's no one, no one there?
From the neighboring lot.
And they have no issues?
We have not received any concerns.
And Mr. Reeve? You know, I mean, I, you know, I, I get it, I'm glad councillor Fadiev asked that question, so they bought this property with that garage already non-compliant. But I'm still not in favor of a three-foot. I mean, we've, we've been sort of given up to five-feet variance, and I look at the, I look at the layout of the property and the garage, and you could, you know, you could build a deck that was compliant, it would be angled, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be rectangular. They could still do that, but I, you know, maybe I'd be okay with a five-foot variance, but not three.
Mr. Reeve, they're here, could we ask them a question, or no?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Lavoie, thank you. Is it possible to go from three feet to five feet, or you need the three-feet variance?
Well, it's a five-shaped lot, and it's very tight.
Do you want to come to the mic?
Good morning, so we bought the property a year and a half ago. The building itself is 20 years old, the garage that we're talking about, and it's kind of where the family resting area is, and where the, the fire pit, and where we barbecue.
Okay.
And just moving it over, we'd have to make that covered deck quite a bit smaller, so that's why we're asking if we can maintain the three feet, if it's possible, and in that way we'd be able to have kind of a table and a lounging area that's covered for the family.
Mr. Reeve, can I just ask?
Yes.
So, now looking at that layout, could you not angle that deck?
As it is already, we will be angling it because of the?
Because right now, right now the drawing shows a rectangular deck?
Yes.
And so I'm just saying, could you not angle that, that area that would be parallel with the property? So it's not, you're not needing the extra couple of feet?
We can, for sure, yes, yep.
Well, no, if you're saying that, then you don't need the variance, though. I mean, that's my, that's my question, if I'm looking at the drawing here of, you know, the layout.
So?
If I was drawing, if I was designing that, I could, I could angle it parallel to the, to that west property line and, and not encroach into the, into the area?
Yeah, so she's popping up a photo right here of what we have in mind to maintain the three feet, and we do have an angle because of the property line, as you can see.
Where's the angle, I can't see it?
So it says property line?
Yes.
And that back wall, we had to angle it, and we're gonna be cutting it off, the whole corner of the rectangular overhang.
Okay, I think he's probably talking about the roof, though, right?
Right, so you can see that there's a wall right there where the cursor is?
Yep.
Just to maintain the distance from the property line, as it is, we're cutting off the whole corner. In the photo, I should have cut the corner of that, that roof.
Right.
Yeah, but we will have to do that for sure. As you can see, the wall is at an angle.
So it's designed to dump all onto the other, onto the other property as well, right?
Pardon me?
It's, the roof is designed as flat to go, I guess that would be to the? To the west, I think. I don't, I don't, that'd be to the west, right?
Right, the roof will, will stay on our property line, yes.
But it'll dump everything on, okay. Yeah, probably has eavesdropping anyway.
That's correct, to the backside of the building.
So, Mr. Reeve, can I just ask again, could you go, could you get away with five feet?
Yes, we can.
Because I, I would right now not recommend giving you that much variance, but?
Yeah, so it's not a problem, just that wall that we see there, I would just move it out towards the building another two feet, which is possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess in some instances where, you know, we're in a hamlet more, I would tend to agree that we need to kind of keep our setbacks proper. But this is on a, on a lot that's kind of treeed in, and there was no concerns to the neighboring lot, so we're talking like, going from five feet to, we're talking a two-foot difference. Two-foot difference on someone's deck makes a big difference as to what you can, kind of furniture you can get on there. Personally, I would, I'm okay with the three feet myself, but?
Yeah, but Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
No, he's not, sorry, he's not asking for, he's asking for from 15-foot variance to three feet. I'd, I'd rather, I'd say 15 to five would be okay. Anyway, that's just my comment. Councillor Crick?
I'd like to start, I believe we could let it go with the five feet, but then we have to bring the bylaw forward and look at this one, under one acre parcels, or even maybe a little bit bigger, and having the setbacks at five feet, I don't see nothing wrong with five feet, but go to three feet, and we gotta set a standard, already, and maintain them standards.
Okay, Mr. Reeve, thank you, I'll make the motion to approve the request. Let's try the three feet first, and if that doesn't go, we'll go with the five feet, but I'll make the motion as it states there, with the, with the recommendations or the conditions, yeah.
You're refusing then, or no?
No, no. Mine was to accept the?
So you're going for two?
Yeah, number two.
Did you? And, okay, they changed the three to, the five to three now on that, okay?
No, I'm gonna stay at three feet.
Yeah, it was just at five, Mike, they just changed it to three now, just a second ago. On my computer it was at five, sorry.
See where it goes, thank you.
All right, thank you councillor Crivack for making a motion on behalf of council. You're choosing number two, it's a long one, so I won't read it. Everybody has read through it, I'm sure. Is there any discussion on this motion? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadiev?
Yeah, we've had this come through lots of times in regards to smaller subdivision lots, and I think five feet is should be, should be the minimum. Because if we go back, I mean, we've done a lot of these decisions in the last couple of years, and for us to go back now and say it's, is three feet is just the wrong move for us.
Councillor Crick?
Yeah, we built, we used to build houses in Bonneville, and the setbacks were five feet on side yards there, and there was the odd time we got variances then, too, to go right in town, so this is out on a country lot where there's trees, and like I said, the neighbor had no concerns, so I think I'm, I'm in favor of going three feet.
Yes, councillor Swagard?
Yeah, just, I mean, I have to kind of disagree with councillor Crick. Like, it's unfortunate, when that house was built, or when that garage was built, if you look at the lot, layout of the lot, there actually is more room. They could have moved the entire building further east, or further east, wouldn't have had this problem, but it, it wasn't, so we're stuck with it. So they want, they want to go, I mean, they were allowed 15 feet, now they want three. I'd say five. If you, if you stick with, if you go three or even less, somebody else will come and they want two and a half feet. What about the neighbor who wants to build? Like, there's nobody there now, but the guy who now owns the next lot, and he wants to, you know, build something, and then he's, he's kind of stuck now, too, because you got a guy with a deck three feet from your, your property line. So, I don't know, I just gotta consider everything, I mean, there's a reason for these setbacks, so I'm just not in favor of that close.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Six, this could be a tie. Yeah. It's defeated?
Okay, Mr. Reeve, I'd like to make another motion to amend the three feet to five feet. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you councillor Crivack for making a motion on behalf of council. It'll be the same motion, except for the, three will be changed back to, to five. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Suspense?
Carrie? Thank you. Onto development application 7.2?
This is development permit number 2022-D-100 for Eric and Carolyn Hill. The applicant is applying for major home business use to operate a greenhouse. The property is located northwest of Township Road 614 and Range Road 483 intersection, approximately 2.7 miles northeast of Glendon. Adjacent properties are a residential parcel, agricultural quarter sections, and remnants. The applicant would like to operate the hillside market, a greenhouse with an accessory building for a point of sale payment at their home parcel. They will operate May and June, seven days a week, Monday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m., and Sundays, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There will be the two landowners employed and up to three additional staff who do not live on site, depending on the workload. They will offer annuals, perennials, shrubs, trees, hanging baskets, planters, and garden supplies. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on June 7th, 2022, and we received no concerns. Recommendation for development application number 2022-D-100 is approve the request for a major home business use for a greenhouse and accessory building as a discretionary use, as per Part VI, Section 47 of the general regulations, and Part VII, Section 69.2 of the land use by law, with the following conditions. As per Section 52 of the Land Use Bylaw number 1667, outdoor lighting shall be located so that rays of light are not directly, are not directed at an adjacent site, do not adversely affect adjacent sites, do not adversely affect traffic safety, shall comply with noise control by law 1657, shall comply with nuisance by law 981. As per Section 47.3, major home business, a major home business may utilize accessory buildings while still maintaining the residential use as the primary use on the site. The home business may employ up to three persons who do not live on the site or within the primary residence. The home business may not generate traffic uncharacteristic to the area. All required parking must be onsite, and outdoor storage of material, goods, or equipment on the site shall be directly related to the home business, and at the discretion of the development authority, may be screened, may require screening or fencing. The home business shall not, in the opinion of the development authority, be a source of inconvenience, materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties by way of excessive noise, smoke, steam, odor, dust, vibration, or refuse matter, which would not commonly be found in the neighborhood. At any time, any of the conditions for the home business have not, in the opinion of the development authority, been complied with, the development authority may issue a stop order pursuant to the provisions of the municipal government act. Building permits are required for any building used for this business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, I see no issues with this, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, thank you councillor Crivack for making a motion on behalf of council. That council approves development permit application number 2022-D-100, a major home business use for a greenhouse and accessory building with, in southeast 28618, west of the 4th M, as discretionary use pursuant to Part VI, Section 47 of the general regulations, and Part VII, Section 69.2 of the land use by law for Eric and Carolyn Hill, as per their recommendation presented. Any discussion, yes, Deputy Reeve Fadiev?
So, people will be accessing it through Range Road 483, probably? So is 43 a gravel road, or is it oiled?
It's oiled.
Oiled, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie?
Thank you.
Thank you, great job, have a good day. Onto nine, 9.2, so we're going to 9.21, concert.
Good morning, council.
Morning. Thank you.
You see in front of you just a slightly updated version of our current request for decision. This request for decision is for a concert license application for the Summer Rush Music Festival. Administration has received an application by a landowner for a license to conduct an outdoor concert within the MD of Bonneville in accordance with MD by law number 808, which was established in 1982. Please note that this by law was identified by administration earlier this year as one of a number of bylaws being updated and integrated into the upcoming new consolidated public safety by law. Wild North Eclectic Society is a not-for-profit organization requesting a license for the Summer Rush Music Festival to be held on the property located at 63115A, Range Road 415A, for August 12th to 14th weekend. The estimated attendance at the festival event is a maximum of 400 people, general ticket sales, plus the addition of approximately 100 musical artists, volunteers, and vendors. The Summer Rush Festival will provide opportunity to highlight and support a variety of local talent, as well as small businesses, as noted in the appendix B. The festival also offers support to local farmer market vendors who have an opportunity to set up at the festival free of charge. As per by law 808, an MD concert license is only required if it meets the following definition. Any music festival, dance festival, rock festival, or similar music, musical activity, whether indoor or outdoor, likely to attract 500 or more people in any one 24-hour period at which music is provided by paid or amateur performers or by pre-recorded means, and which is held at any place within the municipality and to which members of the public are invited or admitted for a charge or free of cost. If the event is outside of this definition, no municipal license or approval is required. However, the event would be subject to other municipal by law regulations, including, excuse me, by law 1657, our noise control by law. Administration has determined that the applicant has met the license requirements identified in the current by law. Attached for council's information, in appendix A is by law number 808. Appendix B is the application with the attachments. Appendix C is an aerial and location map of the event. Reference to our strategic plan, this is in line with goal number four, which is enhance the livability of the community. The applicant has paid the $100 application fee, and administration's recommended action is that council approves the license for the Wild North Eclectic Society to conduct the Summer Rush Music Festival on the property located at 63115A, Range Road 415A, for August 12th, 13th, and 14th, 2022. I also understand that both the applicant and a landowner in the area are also present and have registered to speak on this issue.
What was that last part?
They're both here to address council.
Okay. Mr. Reeve? Yes? Just a question, the, in our package, we do have this RFD, but it's now changed? Now, it looks like the only change is that you mentioned the date of the by law. Is that?
Through the Reeve, the only change made to the, from what you see in front of you is reference to the fact that by law 808 was established in 1982, and that it is earmarked to be included in that consolidated public safety by law that's come into council right away, and just reference to the definition and the requirement that any event would have to fall within this definition in order to even require this license.
Okay, now, the interesting point, now that this new document brought up was, in my opinion, anyway, the fact that they said they'd, they'd have only 400 people, so that would be under the 500 people that was, I think, listed in the by law, so then they didn't think they needed to, to apply, so?
Through the Reeve, the, the definition states that it is likely to attract 500 or more people, as such, administration took that to mean 500 people. Whether or not they're paid attendees, or musicians, or volunteers, it still is a part of that 500, therefore, that's how we chose to interpret it.
Okay, I mean, I?
Just to be conservative.
Mr. Reeve, I'm, I'm in favor of this, I just thought it was weird that they're only thinking 400 people are gonna show up for, I think it's a three-day event, or two-day event?
It is a three-day event, all, all the details are provided in appendix B.
So, I, I'm just hoping, you know, I think that's wrong, I think you're gonna have?
I know it's, if they didn't do such a good job, this thing wouldn't be successful. So, thanks to you guys. But I would definitely see this growing. I'd really encourage the MD to work with the society as far as maybe using our wonderful ski hill facility to, you know, for it to call them their, their home. We're, we're talking about the plans of the ski hill, how we're going to adapt it to maybe, you know, like a festival area. We're talking about a little dome for, you know, for a little stage area. I think that'd be a perfect place for, for us to, to do this and to mitigate some of the, some of the concerns that the residents do have. That's great.
Okay. Both, both parties want to speak here this morning, you said?
That is correct.
Okay. So is Mr. Kotay here or Mrs. Kotay? Yeah. Is there a lot of time for this, Esther?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes is good, sir.
Good morning, counsel.
Morning.
My name is Ted Kotay. I'm here to voice my concerns over Mr. Winterholt's planned outdoor music festival. First of all, I'd like to state that we are in favor of the music festival, but we would like some oversight from the MD and some tempering of the music festival plans. We live across the bay from Mr. Winterholt. It's about 630 meters from his property to our property. On summer nights, we can hear them talking over there. It's basically the, the music comes across or the voices come across the water basically unimpeded. It's incredibly, incredibly loud at our property and at our neighbor's property on the opposite side of the bay. I'm not sure about the neighbors on his side of the bay. There's trees in between and things like that, but on our side of the bay, it's, it sounds like those speakers are right in our front yard. As a result of that, we've suffered quite a bit last year. He had a music festival last year, an unlicensed event. He's had parties at his place. He plays his music. His stage is set up between his house and the lake, and his speakers appear to be pointing directly at our property. So there is a lot of noise. It disrupts our own social engagements, and in some cases, the music has gone late in the night, early in the morning, and has disrupted our sleep and our neighbor's sleep as well. So we've talked to Mr. Winterholt. We have a good relationship with our neighbors. I have no problem with him going ahead with his music festival, but I think he needs to temper it as far as the time it ends. 11:00 p.m. is a time that's, you know, quoted in the, in the Noise Bylaw. I looked over the, the outdoor Bylaw 808, Section 6H, and it talks about the time the music festival, it says the music festival shall cease operation at 2:00 a.m., but I think they're talking about indoor or outdoor festivals. They're talking about festivals on commercial land, non-residential land. This is a slightly different situation. This is our neighborhood. This is our backyard, and this music is very, very loud. This is a rock music festival. This isn't just folk singers singing with acoustic equipment. This is full-out amplifiers and everything. Mr. Winterholt has decided, or he's talked to me, he said that live music is going to end at 11:00, and then after that, it's going to be DJ music until 2:00 a.m. Well, we have no, we, we don't, we don't really care whether it's live music or DJ music. It's the noise that's coming from his property that's the concern. My wife works on weekends. Some of our neighbors have jobs that require them to work on weekends, and 2:00 a.m. is, is too late. We think it should fall within the bylaw, the Noise Bylaw, and we would withdraw our objections if that was the case. Everything else being the same, Mr. Winterholt has agreed to apply for a license, which we, which we agree with. I've been to a bunch of music festivals. Most outdoor music festivals, the music does end at 11:00, and I've been to Camrose a number of times. I'm a lover of outdoor music or music festivals, and most of them end at, at 11:00, and quiet time is midnight, just for that reason that they don't disrupt the neighbors. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thanks for listening to me.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Just one second. Any questions?
Actually, Mr. Reeve, it's not a question for you, though. It is a question for council and CAO, and, and yeah, it's, it's a contradiction here with this bylaw and our Noise Bylaw, because I would agree to him. This is a residential area that, that sounds like you've been having sort of issues for a while, and we do have a Noise Bylaw, and it sounds like it's not really working out there. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be all that keen. I, you know, I liked Counselor Fadiev's comments, because we need, you know, you need, we need this sort of thing, but we need a venue for it. And I think the ski hill is, you know, that's the kind of location where it's not residential. It's, you know, it's away from everybody.
Deputy Reeve Fadiev?
Yeah, just, just a comment to Counselor Swiger. Yeah, you know, we, we still have, we still have, you know, campers out there as well, so, you know, with, within that, but I think right now, at this point, you know, you're in favor just for the time-wise, but we'll, we'll figure that out here right away, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Winterholt?
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
So with, so we, we reached out to a number of neighbors across, across the bay, and we want to be inclusive and, of course, be good neighbors, and, oh, thank you, Kelsey. And so we've been offering tickets to our, to our neighbors complimentary, and the response has been, been awesome. And unfortunately, last year, I know there was a grad party, not at our property, but along the bay. Don't know where it's coming from. It could come from any of the, the neighboring spots, but there was never any noise complaints received from Mr. and Mrs. Kotay. So, you know, there was, there was a couple music events that happened last year that were just private functions, and most of them would have ended before 11:00, and if they didn't, there was no, there was no conversation about that, so, which is unfortunate, because I do want to be a good neighbor, and I know, I know how noise does carry across the, the bay. And we've reached out to, to numerous neighbors who are very supportive, and they're excited to be a part of it. As part of the, the numbers comment there, yes, this does have the capability to grow, but we kind of wanted to keep it that exclusive, on-the-bay lawn chairs, keep it just like a nice, you know, like family atmosphere. So tickets will be limited. So, you know, if a thousand people show up ready, well, there's only so much occupancy that can, that can come. The ski hill would be a great idea in the future, which we could cross that road when, when we get there. You know, I want to make this an awesome event, get our feet wet with, with this, follow all the bylaws, and make it a really positive event. You know, like there's, well, all the mandates are, are being looked after. Let me see here. I think, I don't know, is there any, any questions or comments that?
Yeah, Deputy Reeve Fadiev?
So with that many people, as far as, you know, having to drink beer and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Where are they going to go? As far as washrooms go?
There, there's, like, Bob's Portables are, are, they're, we're renting all of the equipment from, from them. Wild, Wild Rose is our, our dumpsters and that, plus our, we have our volunteer corps that will be mitigating where to go. We've got onsite food trucks sorted out. And another topic, like, back in February 18th is when I reached out to the MD and was given guidance to proceed, and that's where there's a little bit of frustration of, I guess, miscommunication there, where, you know what? I'm quite far along in the process, unfortunately. Well, I mean, it's, it's coming up, so, like, again, with the ski hill, that's a great idea, and I'd love for Wild North Eclectic to be a part of that, because I think we could have an awesome partnership, because there's a lot to it, and we've got a solid group right now. And, you know, and so last, last year, if there was too much noise, what I would want to do is just condense it to one, one weekend, one event. And as far as the, the time allotment, the, the proposed plan was for music on the main stage to end at 11:00, and then there is a, a three, three-walled garage pointing inwards where the DJ would commence, just kind of like, like you would at a dance, right? Like the, that part of the, part of the night, which I know the, the license says until 2:00 a.m., which, you know, we, like, I'd be in favor of making that adjustment. There's like 15, well, the list of artists and bands is just tremendous, and it's awesome, the outpour of, of arts that are into this, the, the farmer's market. It's really a, going to be a special event, and I feel like, you know, if, if it's just a matter of the time allotment, I feel like we could make that adjustment happen. There are, you know, DJs that are planning on traveling a tremendous way to be there, so I feel like if, if we can extend it beyond 11:00, like, like, we could shut it down at midnight, if possible, but yeah, I think that's all I can say.
Okay, thank you. So, Counselor Swiger, then Counselor Slipchak.
Questions about, I guess, I'm not sure if there's a question for you. What was going through my mind here? Is there a Noise Bylaw? And you said you hadn't got complaints, but you personally may not have got complaints, and I may ask Mr. Gendelphi to verify this for me, but when somebody, when somebody calls the municipality and puts in a, a formal complaint, the municipality doesn't phone you and say, "Bob Smith, you know, is complaining." So I don't think you're going to get that kind of feedback. You, you should get complaints from the constables, but not from neighbors?
Okay.
I mean, you'll know, you'd probably know it's coming from neighbors, but not specific neighbors, so, because they're not, I don't think they're going to tell you that. But, but we still have a situation, though, where, you know, it sounds like a nice event, but if you're still cranking out DJ stuff after 11:00 and the neighbors are still complaining, I mean, we have a bylaw, so you're going to have constables coming out shutting you down anyway.
Yeah.
So it's kind of like you're, we're a bit stuck here, because I don't think this council wants to say, "Well, we'll just blow the bylaw out of the water and you do whatever you want." It's not fair to the residents that live around it.
No, that's right. And that's why I want to achieve the license for the special event.
Just one second. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and to council. Just for council clarity, when a license is provided, it, it can provide an exemption to the bylaw. There is no contradiction between the bylaw and the license, because the license can allow a one-time exemption. That's essentially what a license is, is to provide that exemption. Currently, the exemption was till 2:00 a.m., and so it's not as if they have a license and then peace officers will go out. Peace officer will be informed that there's a license. It would be up to council to determine whether 2:00 a.m. or 11:00 p.m. is, would be the appropriate time or any other time. But there is no contradiction between licensing and the actual bylaw.
Counselor Slipchak?
Thank you for coming here. I just want to ask, you mentioned you had a few events last year, private functions. Like, what number of people did you have at those functions, and did you encounter any issues at those functions that maybe you learned to apply to this situation as well?
You know what? The response was so positive, and everyone was just, you know, like, we need, we need something like this. There's no, there's, you know, there's no, like, just a music and culture festival, and so, you know, the, and it was kind of like, I, I play, I play music in a band and a lot of, lot of, so I'm kind of interwoven in, in that scene somewhat, so then, so, so being able to provide, I don't know, I guess, a space and, you know, and an atmosphere, and so, you know, like, rather than have sporadic events that say shut down at 11:00, but they're super noisy until 11:00, rather just encompass it, do it, do it once, do it right on a, on a weekend, and yeah, invite all the neighbors for an awesome time.
Yes, Counselor Slipchak?
I'd like just to say that I think it'd be great, like, what he's doing, he's got a lot of local businesses involved with him, and opportunities there, and having to shut down a party on 11:00 o'clock, I don't, he's not going to get success that way, so I could see it going, stay with the two for Friday and Saturday, and then maybe on the Sunday night, have it shut down early, and that's all my comment.
May I say one thing there? Sunday, there is no, there is no music Sunday, just the licensing encompasses Sunday to, as like a clear out kind of day. Yeah. So it's just Saturday, Sunday, or Sa- Friday, Saturday, sorry. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Winterholt, you said you have tickets, so is there only so many tickets, and there's going to be guys at the gate?
Yes, we have a, we'll have gate, we'll have security, we'll have all that stuff.
Okay. So if a thousand people show up, they're not?
They can't come.
They're not coming? Okay.
That's right.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I guess just looking for a motion.
Did you want to make that motion? Go ahead.
I'll make the motion, accept that council approves license for Wild North Eclectic Society to hold their concert.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slipchak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the application for a license for the Wild North Electric Society to conduct a Summer Rush Music Festival on the property located at 61, sorry, 63115A Range Road 415A for August 12th, 13th, and 14th of 2022. Any discussion on this motion? Yes?
Just the, the details of that license, Mr. Reeve, is, is, do we need to know any of the details, or do we know them? It's till, it's till 2:00 a.m.? Is that?
I'm pretty sure that's what I read, it's till 2:00 a.m.
And so is it from, yeah, can you just give us a bit of detail? Because we're voting on a license, we don't, I don't know what the license says.
Through the Reeve, the license will state that the, all the details that were provided in the application would be approved. So it would be that the MD approves this event based on the parameters and definitions and terms presented in the application.
Sorry, Mr. Reeve, do I, do we have that application?
So through the Reeve, maybe, maybe what I should state is that it's, there isn't actually an application form. All of the requirements were in the bylaw, and then based on the bylaw sections, that is the license application that was submitted by the organization.
Okay, so, okay, that's not very clear, actually, so, or do they, do they start, will they start playing music at, you know, like, 10:00 in the morning or 8:00, or, I'm just kind of curious of what, the whole time? And does it say 11:00 or 2:00 a.m. in the bylaw? Is that, I guess that's the only thing we're voting on, is the time period when the music ends, I guess? I'm not sure.
Okay, so, counsel, if you'd like to look at page 1, 2, 3, of, page 3 of Appendix B, under Section C, it states that the date and time of the concerts are presented there, so August 12th is from 1300 hours to 2300 hours. August 13th is from 9:00 a.m. until 2300 hours.
But the music will, on Friday, August 12th, the music will be from 4:00 till 11:00, and on the 13th, it's from 1:00, or 1:00 p.m. till 11:00 p.m. Description. Is that stated in the application? This is the revised one. I had added more into Section C, but I think I might have been wrong to get us the wrong one. Yeah.
Okay, counsel, just for clarity, sorry, can you show me those times again? The times in question or that are being proposed by the applicant?
So music is from 1:00 p.m. to?
On the Friday, the music will begin at 1:00 p.m. and, and at?
Oh, no, that's Saturday. Friday, it's music at 3:00 p.m. ending at 11:00, and then on the Saturday, music starts at 1:00 p.m. ending at 11:00 p.m.
So you do have the music ending at 11:00?
Yeah. There is, as Benjamin had said, there is the DJ in, in the garage area there, but...
So this is specifically the live music?
Yeah.
So when is the end of the, of the music?
That is, Ben, it's 1:00. 1:00 a.m.? Yeah. Okay.
I'm sorry, was that 1:00 a.m. every day, or, because you said 11:00, you said the music ends at 11:00? I'm sorry, was that a one AM every day, or, because you said eleven, you said the music ends at eleven on the Saturday, but then the DJ kicks in?
Yes, that's correct. So, um, uh, through the Reeve, the event will go to one AM on the Friday, and on Saturday, and Saturday as well.
So at one AM, it's quiet?
Correct.
Sir, Mr. Reeve, the DJ will be there from eleven to one PM, uh, one AM, two hours, right?
That is correct.
Counselor Crick.
Yeah, I just, we're, we made a motion on, a previous motion on a bylaw and a setback, um, thinking it might affect a neighbor, and here we're looking at another thing that's gonna affect neighbors, and we're okay with this one, but we're not okay with the other one. Seems like there's a, on the council has an inconsistency. So I, I do recognize that we've, that, uh, Benjamin's gone quite a ways with the planning already on this event for this year, but looking, looking forward, I think there needs to be probably a, a different venue, or, because we can't be, when we're making noise, we're, it's going on to the neighbor's property, and that's, it's affecting our, the neighbors more so than a three-foot setback would.
I, I think it's quite a bit different, because that garage is gonna be there forever, and this is a one-time event, so it's quite a bit different.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I was gonna say the same thing, that one's permanent, this one's temporary, yeah.
And, and, uh, yeah, third thing is, we're following both bylaws, because the bylaw is from, uh, till two AM, so we are.
There's a bylaw till two AM?
Yep.
Sorry, through the Reeve, um, just, just to provide clarity, as far as, this all came back to what the license will say. Based on what the license and this bylaw states is, they can have music up until, or operate up until two AM. So, um, that, they happen to be within that timeframe, they are proposing to close at one PM, or what AM. However, the license and the bylaw allows applications for up to two AM of operation.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, Counselor Crick.
You're right, there's a, there's a bit of a, you know, controversy here, because we have a noise bylaw, right? But then this, this supersedes it apparently, because it's a, they're applying for a license for a two-day event, so we're kinda overriding that with this other bylaw. Am I totally in favor? Not, not really, I mean, I'd rather have it at a, uh, you know, venue that's not bothering people, but, I mean, I, I'd love to see these kind of things happen in the area, though, we need them.
I, I guess because of the, sorry, I guess because of the amount of planning that's got into it, I'll, I'll be in favor for this year, but if it comes back next year and they're planning to make noise, it's gonna affect the people's property after the noise bylaw, I'll have to vote no then, so.
Yeah, Counselor Slipcheck.
Well, I, I'm in favor of promoting at least, uh, bringing, uh, awareness to our community through all this as well, that goes far. A young man trying to, uh, get a business and make, and help the community, so I believe we should support it. I'm in favor of it's only for a two-day event.
Okay, any other discussion on this motion? Yes?
Yeah, I hate to beat this one, Mr. Reeve, but I, I just, I'm a little concerned about your, your four hundred people limit, because you, like, you're, you're saying estimating four hundred, but, like, I, I, to me, that doesn't seem right at all, like, there's so many people in this area would love to come to an event like this. Uh, like, I, I guess we say we'll try it for a year and see what happens, you know, uh, the end of the year going forward. As I, you know, you could easily have, like, two thousand people out there.
We are also trying to adhere to, uh, the buyer, um, uh, expectations and sub- to, where, you know, certain sized property outdoors, um, you still need, you're, you have an access passary and a permit to the buyer, too, so, um, with it being on, uh, Benjamin's property, it's, um, it kinda gaps us up a five hundred, so they can't do the higher duty.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that, thanks.
Okay, that's, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call for the vote. It's carried. Thank you, on to nine, two point two.
Uh, Mr. Reeve?
Yes?
Could I recommend a, a break? I'm not sure we'll have time before the delegation.
You're right, sorry, let's take a five-minute break before the ten o'clock. Thank you, uh, Mr. Hogan. Welcome back, uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we're going into delegations, and I believe our first one is Portage, Portage College. Morning.
Good morning.
Sure, we're waiting for you.
Okay, good morning, you can cancel, thank you very much for your time today.
I think your mic might not be on yet. There you go.
Is that better?
Yeah, just lift it up there.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
No problem, how's that?
Very good, we're getting deaf.
Okay, good morning, thanks so much for your time to provide a quick update on the college. I did send a PowerPoint ahead of time, I'm not necessarily gonna go through it slide by slide, it was mainly a backgrounder, uh, but what I wanna do is bring you a couple updates and some new hot-off-the-press information, and then just, uh, talk about some of the collaboration that I think could be an opportunity. So for those I haven't met, uh, I'm Nancy Broadbent, I'm the president of Portage College. Very happy to have that role, I've been in it for, I think, about four years now. Uh, been at the college forever, my whole career, pretty much, um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm very familiar with the college and, and some of the history that we've had in Bonneville, and I'm pleased to say that we're back up and running with a community adult learning program. I've had some good conversations, uh, with representatives from the town about some opportunities here in the community, and I've just met Scott, so we're off and running on some things. In the PowerPoint presentation, I talked a bit about our new strategy that we just inked, uh, during COVID, basically. Um, it's really talking about three pillars at the college, uh, aligned with Alberta twenty thirty. So Alberta twenty thirty is the new goals of advanced education that were worked on and have been provided. There's lots of focus in that about work-integrated learning, um, and improving graduate success by having actual work experience as part of their education. The college sector has kind of always been about that anyway, we run at about seventy percent of our programs have a built-in practicum that the students have to take in order to complete, but there, where's the goal to get to closer to a hundred percent, some of which will be mandatory practicums and some of which students will choose. Um, but the whole idea is to help that transition into the workforce, and we all know we're coming up with some labor shortages there. Another pillar that's in our program is about efficiency, um, as you may know, the government's been doing some cuts. We suffered about seventeen percent over the last three years, but I'm pleased to say that we're in good financial shape. We've had our best year, uh, since two thousand and five this year, our student enrollments are through the roof. We've had what we call full-load equivalent, so full-time students, eleven hundred students this year, full-load equivalent across our seven campuses. That's the first time we've been over a thousand since two thousand and five, so the numbers are up and the revenue comes with students. But we also have some really exciting things happening with international student enrollment and a number of program expansions that I'll talk about in a second. Uh, what we learned from COVID is that students are very much in the mode of choice, uh, so it is pushing us to kind of high-flex learning. We've had about, I would say roughly a third of our programs, we're in a blended format already, meaning they take online, but they come in for labs, or they have practicums that are face-to-face. Um, so we were able to pivot, but what we learned in that pivot is that even students that we thought would really prefer face-to-face, there's some that say, I can manage at home, I have a young family, let me stay home and do my studies. So we're trying to figure out, in a high-flex environment, how we can serve both, meaning students will be in class and others will be online, and they'll be working together in that format. Some quick facts about Bonneville, uh, over the past five years, uh, students attending Portage College from this region, about sixty-three percent of them are attending at Cold Lake, nineteen percent are attending online, and about twelve percent are coming to Lacklavish. Uh, the top five programs for Bonneville residents are college preparation, practical nurse, university studies, early learning, which is for, uh, working in daycares, uh, electrical and social work. Um, so some exciting news about that, we got, uh, expansion funding for our practical nurse program and our community social work program. Both of those will be growing in the coming year. We got money to run electric, uh, sorry, computer technician courses in our university studies, which we're mapping to, uh, Athabasca University completion, and, uh, we are doing lots of work in partnership. So this year, uh, you may or may not know that we already run a degree completion in business, that's in partnership with NATE. Um, we do the Aboriginal teacher education program with the University of Alberta, that's a cyclical thing that comes about every three years. Uh, it is running this year, but some new things that we're doing is we have a com- education completion that will be ongoing every year with the University of Calgary, that's a blended format, so that's available across our region. We have three degree completions with Athabasca University, one being a general studies, one in HR, and then a couple in the arts. And we also have a really exciting announcement that, uh, is happening in an open house on the twenty-eighth, which is a practical nursing completion to bachelor's degree. So that, we're having an open house, U of C will be coming, basically, we're gonna try to understand where are the students coming from, and that's where we'll run the programs. Uh, they will have a blended format in, in some sort, I suspect. Um, so the other thing that we did receive was expansion funding for pre-apprenticeship carpentry and welding. We have not run carpentry for a number of years, and this is our way back in the door. Both of those programs are one semester of academic upgrading, so they're intended for people that aren't ready to go into those trades. They do a full semester then of the actual equivalent of the first period of those trades, and then they get a full semester of work placement. So it's getting people into that indentured mode so that they can finish. Um, and, yeah, I talked about nursing, I think that's all of them. So we do expect that with those expansion funding dollars, we're gonna grow our student numbers by about two hundred over the next year, which is a pretty good number for us. Um, beyond that, I've been having lots of conversations about, uh, from our continuing education department and the micro-credentials, what are the things that employers in the region need, including the municipalities, and I wanted to thank your municipality specifically for your support on the heavy equipment operator program, which is coming back, we stalled it for a year, it was costing us an exorbitant amount of money. Um, we found a way to deliver it that now includes a placement, and that has enabled us to move out a bunch of owned equipment. So there are student placements, uh, agreements with your municipality, um, so that hopefully will also help you get operators, greater operators, and excavator operators, that sort of thing. We've had some conversations with Seven Lakes about, uh, doing scaffolding training and other training in a facility that Northern Light School Division has in your community, so we're trying to figure out how that might work. Um, and the really big thing is with this work-integrated learning that, uh, has become such a focus of advanced education, we've developed some courses in our university studies that are called interdisciplinary something or other, and they're an equivalency to a university course, but it is strictly a work project. So if there are things for the municipality that you would like to see a business student taking on to do work in a particular area, or could be any one of the programs we offer, power engineering, a student could choose that as an elective course, and then we create a project with them, and they're working for the semester for an organization. So hopefully that will give us a few ideas for opportunities. Um, the last thing I'll talk about is in our plan, we, uh, as folks may know, we have a very high percentage of indigenous students in our, in our student body, we run anywhere, uh, from fifty to sixty percent. The self-declared number is about forty-eight in our credit programs, but we not, run a number of programs right on the First Nations, so of course those are pretty much a hundred percent. Um, I guess because of that and our history over fifty-four years now of working with those, uh, neighbors and partners, we have a lot of expertise in, uh, the reconciliation process, and we have a brand-new Wanska room in Lacklavish, where we'll be doing, from there out to all of our communities, indigenous programming and cultural support. So if there's things there that you're interested in, I'm certainly willing to chat. So that's really all I was gonna present this morning, do you have any questions for me?
Counselor Swiger.
Hey, good morning, um, a couple of questions, I, the, you have that one page showing, uh, the benchmark numbers? Now, is that, is that, there's just there because it's there, or did you, you're trying to get Portage to kinda go closer to the benchmark numbers, or no?
No, I, the purpose for that is about that message of our student demographics are unique. So it really does drive the programming mix we have and the support services that we have, and also our reliance on government funding. So we tend to be, uh, lots of single moms, uh, very high indigenous enrollment number, so we have a lot of support services to support those students through their journey.
And I'll just ask, uh, um, you talk about the area, but you're really talking about Cold Lake, I think, and I'll, I'll just bring up the topic, probably of Bonneville, because the C two was built with Portage as a partner, and then they pulled out. Uh, so is there any discussion with the C two of having any kind of training at the C two, or do you have?
So we do have the community adult learning program running out of there, which means that any one of our blended program students can take there. We have had conversations, I've had with the town of Bonneville about the commercial kitchen that's there, so we're wondering about our culinary arts program that's in St. Paul. We do have a pre-employment cooking that's available online, so we're looking at, could that be a blended format? The one thing that I will make clear, and it's probably not the most popular message, is that we are not looking for facility expansion. We have learned through COVID that students, we got, we've got excess facilities in our group, I guess, and then I, and then with our cuts, we just can't afford to expand, so it would be like a temporary, there's a need to offer, we build it into the cost of offering and come in and use facilities, which could be longer than, it could be short or long depending on the demand.
Thank you. Any other questions? All seeing none, I thank you for your?
Thank you.
Update on Portage Cor- College, thank you.
Thank you, have a good day, everybody.
Yeah, you have a great day.
I do, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, um, one of the things that is really important to us is word of mouth, so I have some packages here that if you know somebody that wants to go to Portage, if you would pass them along, that'd be great, I'll just leave them here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion, if we accept this presentation by Portage College as information.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Criviac for making a motion that counsel, oh, sorry, who did I say? Oh, sorry. Sorry, that Counselor Slipcheck makes a motion on behalf of council, that council accepts the presentation by Portage College as information. Any discussion, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carried, thank you. I have another delegation, Community Futures Lakeland, morning ladies.
Is it okay if we click through this line? Okay, thank you so much. Good morning, your honors, Reeve Kalinsky, members of council, my name is Lisa Ford, and I'm the general manager for Community Futures Lakeland. This is my business analyst, Rea Salee. We're happy to be here with you today, the MD of Bonneville is a major stakeholder for Community Futures Services, and we'd like to do a couple things today, first of all, we'd just like to give you a quick overview of the program for those of you who might not be familiar, and then, as our fiscal year end was March thirty-first, we'd just like to take a minute to talk about our year in review, some of the projects and programs that we worked on last year. So Community Futures, it is federally funded through Prairies Can Economic Development Canada, this used to be Western Economic Diversity- This used to be Western Economic Diversification. We are a not-for-profit, we're a grassroots program. That just means that we try to identify specific needs in this region, and we work towards in meeting those needs. We are a developmental lender, and that supports, we support businesses that banks cannot serve. Sometimes, when a business goes to the bank and they get turned down, we can say yes to some of those loans. And there's twenty-seven offices across Alberta. So our Community Futures office is governed by a volunteer board of directors. It has a manager, a business analyst, and we have a project coordinator slash administrator. The purpose of Community Futures is to help rural communities develop and implement local solutions to challenges and opportunities. So if you are a business in a big city center, there's lots of resources that are available, and this is not the case for our rural businesses. So we try to create a friendly economic culture to promote new businesses and to maintain the existing businesses that we have in our region. We want to drive economic growth in our region through building awareness of local opportunities to support diversification. So of the many services that we provide, there's three main pillars as well that we use to drive economic growth. That is, we offer business loans for up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our rural businesses. We offer free business training and coaching, and we engage in many local economic development projects. So the first pillar that I want to talk about is our business loans for up to a hundred and fifty thousand. We are, like I said, developmental lenders. Our loans are approved by our Board of Directors, and our Board of Directors is made up of our local community members. This allows us to approve loans based on, if this is a good business for our community, is it providing jobs, and does it address a local need in our region? We can use our lending to achieve strategic, community-focused outcomes. When the bank says no, we can look at the character of ownership of the business owner and the capacity of their management team, and we can gauge if this is a good business for us to invest in. So we initially received money by the federal government that now forms our Community Futures Loan Fund. We have a federal mandate to get those funds out as loans to grow our communities. We can take on diverse industries and higher-risk business opportunities. Our goal is to drive new growth clusters such as agrifood, agritourism, and in our region, we have oilfield, clean tech, and aerospace. So in our 2021, 2022 year, we awarded sixteen loans, were we approved, for four hundred and forty thousand, and those businesses brought in of their own to leverage a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So currently, we also, in our regular loan fund that we have, we have money loaned out into the Lakeland totaling one million eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand from our normal loan fund. We also hold the Federal Regional Relief and Recovery Fund, the Triple RF, that currently has two million twenty-seven thousand out in the region. And so the total dollars loaned out by our Community Futures Office is three million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And you can see by the graph there, the businesses that are broken down, the dollars broken down by region, obviously, the MD, the Cold Lake and Bonneville are our biggest municipalities, so those have the biggest group of loans out. So in our regular loan fund currently, we have two million two hundred and ninety-one thousand that is available to lend out. We have just taken on a new provincial program, the Alberta Women's Economic Recovery Capital Growth Initiative. The province will be giving us a hundred thousand dollars to loan out. This will be prime plus two, from ten thousand to seventy-five thousand dollars. It's set up very similar to the Triple RF with a forgivable portion. So if you know a woman entrepreneur, send them over. So the second pill, pillar that we deal with is free business training and coaching. We offer one-on-one business counseling, we offer research services, we can do primary research with the business, and we can forward them onto the city if they need secondary industry-specific research. We do business connections. We love our local community businesses, and we truly believe that collaboration is king. Businesses who can partner and collaborate to deliver products and services are more likely proven to succeed. Learning and events, we provide all kinds of training and workshops for entrepreneurs. And I'll just tell you a little bit later about a new program we have coming up in the fall called Smart Start. So in regards to last year, our stats for our April, which is our fiscal year 2021 to March 2022, eighty-seven businesses were created and maintained through our services and our loans, seven hundred and seventeen advisory consultations of people that are calling us for resources, looking to grow or to start their businesses, and six hundred and seventy-nine training participants went through our workshops and our webinars. We're averaging about five to six interactions per client that calls us, and we have about three to four people walking in or calling us every day for services. The last pillar that we focus on is we engage in all kinds of local economic development, and we do this by building entrepreneurial communities. We have a strong, community-driven approach to entrepreneurship. We have entrepreneurial systems in place, such as access to capital and technical assistance and training, and we work collaboratively with many partners to ensure a strong entrepreneurial environment. One of the programs we have is the REAP, the Regional Economic Information Partnership, which Esther sat on for the MD, and now Mr. Kovach sits on. The second thing is focusing on wealth-generating sectors. We take advantage of our local growth clusters that we have, such as tourism, agrifood, and farm-to-fork, and procurement, of course, linking businesses to the defense industry. And the third thing, community leaders and projects. We identify and build upon the region's assets, like was mentioned with aerospace and tourism and ag. They're regional, it's important for us to collaborate, to work on these together. So in our 2021, 2022 year, my Community Futures put over fifteen thousand dollars back into the community in projects, and seventy-six thousand eight twenty-nine was leveraged into those projects by our community partners. So in total, we put ninety-two thousand back into our community in projects and programs. So we're kind of proud of that. And as I mentioned, collaboration is really everything for us, and these are some of the amazing organizations that we do partner with locally. We champion many local projects, we work closely with our chambers of commerce and our municipalities, and these are some of the other programs that we're currently working on. Of course, Open Farm Days is coming up, and the MD is a wonderful supporter of that, and Lemonade Day that we just had last weekend, and Counselor Crick, your, your children won, so congratulations to them, they went through our program. And, of course, Smart Start is a new program that we are going to work on, and I just want to hand it over to Rea, and she's just going to talk to you about another program, the business, or the beautification loan program that you have done with us.
All right, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Council for partis, your financial support, participating with this program last year. For those of you who weren't here last year, I'll just kind of run through the breakdown of the program. So do five loans, which means the Community Futures Lakeland is lending out forty thousand dollars. There's five grants. Each business owner receives ten thousand dollars, an eight thousand dollar loan from Community Futures, and a two thousand dollar grant from you, the municipality. As well, you pay the interest. The interest expense to the municipality is six percent over thirty-six months, so that adds up to about three thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. So the total cost to the municipality to offer this program to five businesses within your municipality is thirteen thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. So year one, this program was very well-received in the MD of Bonneville. To date, we have approved five loans in the region, and we have an additional three businesses who have expressed interest in applying. So for the program statistics, we had eight expressions of interest for that initial program offering. We had five applications that came through the door, and all five were successful. The program was a very nice add-on to client projects that were already in the works, so which was nice. And you can see that the total investment in the MD of Bonneville was actually quite significant, two hundred and thirty, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Okay? Several of the projects are still in the works, but we do anticipate that the five projects will be complete at the end of this year's construction season. The first recipient was the Lakeland Agriculture Research Association. They were looking to update their building with some new windows and some lighting, and if you've been over to visit them, it's a lot brighter space now. So that work is complete. Northern Images Graphic Design Studio and Art Studio. Marcia Hayward is a local entrepreneur and artist. She has operated a home-based gallery for many years, and she applied to the program to improve her parking area and, as well as make her building a little bit more accessible to people with disabilities. This project is ongoing, but we anticipate it will be complete by fall. Bonneville Bolt Supply, they were in the process of relocating to their home property located on the highway outside of Bonneville. This project was much more significant, and the beautification loan was a small part of it. Work is ongoing on this project, near completion. Three Fifty Farms is a relatively new business to our region. They invested significantly in the development of the business and applied to the beautification loan program just to complete entrance sign spotlighting, handicap access, hardscaping, landscaping, and signage. This project is nearing completion. RLM Financial, they've operated in the Lakeland region for over thirty years, and they did plan to improve the look of their building, including quality fencing, signage, electrical, and additional shelving. This project, the, the signage is almost complete, the fencing will be completed during this construction season. Great. Yes, and thank you for approving the program again this year. Like I said, we had three, I anticipated, I anticipated this being a harder sell than it would be in, in a town or a city, but actually, the MD of Bonneville, the program was very popular with your, with your local businesses. So we had, we've had a lot of requests, and people are waiting in the wings, so it's exciting.
Thank you for that. So the next project that we have is, of course, our Project Gazelle. One of our federal mandates is to support women entrepreneurs, and so we engage locally with Project Gazelle. There's a large number of strong women entrepreneurs in this area, and we want to make sure that we're giving them the resources that they need to be successful. And of course, our procurement series, this is the fifth series that we've done with procurement training for local businesses. We cover federal, provincial, and municipal procurement basics, such as how to register, how to find opportunities. As well, we do a four-wing Cold Lake-based specific series that includes DCC, Defence Construction Canada, and Merx. And then actually, today is our DND, so on base, under twenty-five thousand goods sourced locally. And then tomorrow morning at eight, we're doing security clearance and everything you need to know for your business there. And then the last one we're doing in June is Mr. Nagoya from the city of Cold Lake is going to talk about the municipal procurement steps. So one more thing I just want to touch on quickly is our upcoming Smart Start program. So it's challenging to go beyond three to five years for our small businesses, and only thirty-five percent of them will be successful. However, research has shown that training and resources, eighty to ninety percent of those businesses will succeed beyond five years. So Smart Start is not only a training program, it is a community builder. It creating a community that supports entrepreneurs leads to new businesses starting and expanding, which is a key part of our business sector growth. This program offers training, mentorship, and networking. Studies have shown that small business really is the driver of our economy, especially in rural areas. And so finally, I just want to say, business retention, Smart Start is a start, but it's imperative that we understand the current economic climate and that we can respond with relevant and valuable information to assist those local businesses to remain viable. We are providing coaching services and help businesses in reevaluating their current business model. Viability also needs to be looked at through a succession planning lens. We want our community to thrive and those businesses to remain open. We will be addressing succession planning in a new workshop coming up with the Chamber of Bonneville in October. We're going to do kind of a reverse trade show for businesses, one to five years, looking to sell or looking to buy in our area, so we're excited about that. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak today. I'm not sure if you can tell, but we're very passionate about our small business community and our services through Community Futures. And I would just ask that as you go about in your everyday operations, if you come across businesses or entrepreneurs, just refer them to us. We are free service, we're government-funded, and we would love to help them. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies. Any questions? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadav.
Yeah, just a comment, more, more so. You guys do amazing work. What I, what I like about Community Futures is they give people that are looking for money some, I guess, downright honest truth on how to apply for the money and what they're doing wrong. So even before they actually get the money, they look at their business case and see if it's viable or not. A lot of these people have to go back and really dig in and make their business really noteworthy to, to apply again. So that's the, that's a big part, not just the money part of it, but the training, the support after is amazing.
Thank you. Counselor Swager.
Do these folks have to go to a bank first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will take them if they're not successful, but then not like the bank, and the bank does this to some extent, but we'll work with their business plan, right? We'll find out what's missing there, and we can approve them sometimes.
Thank you.
And, and as, as of lately, it's really easy to get an O from the bank because of the, of the areas where we live. They, most of the applications are done from down east, and they look at our, at our demographics, and they look at oil and gas, and they're not very accommodating to it. So a lot of the businesses that are here are struggling to expand, and this is a perfect venue for that. So in my case, when I first started, my numbers were fantastic. We were, we were, you know, we were really expanding, we were taking over our garage and our, and our neighborhood, and trying to be nice to my neighbors. We decided to look for a spot, and nobody would give us the money, even though our numbers were there. So Community Futures stepped up, and they gave us the money, and so hence we were in downtown Grand Centre now, so, and it's thanks to these guys. After that, two years after, the bank is knocking on my door going, hey, can we take over your mortgage? So it's, thank you, guys.
What did you tell them?
There's some promotion.
I also did want to comment about clients needing to be turned down before they come to us. Clients can also come to prepare for their bank meeting. So I really like when a client comes in and they're looking. We can do a practice run with them, you know, of what's, what questions they're going to receive. So even if, you know, even if a client or a person in your, your community is looking for financing, they can come to us, we're confidential service, and for a lot of people, that practice run is important, because sometimes they're not familiar with what the banker is going to say to them, right?
Thank you.
So we can help them prepare.
All right, thank you, ladies. Have a great rest of the day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just look, yes. Kravjik, you did this.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I'll make the motion to approve this report. Thank you.
I'll get the right guy this time. Thank you, Counselor Kravjik, for making a motion on behalf of Council that Council accepts the presentation by Community Futures Lakeland on the programs they offer and their report on beautification loan program as information. Any discussion on this motion? I'll call for the vote then. All right, Carrie, just need a five-minute recess here. Okay, well, welcome back. I believe we're going to nine-two-two beekeeping. Is that correct? Yeah? Good morning, once again.
Good morning. At the April thirteenth, 2022 Regular Meeting of Council, administration was directed by Council to bring back additional information regarding the feasibility of increasing the allowance level for the keeping of bees within the municipality to council. In the province of Alberta, the keeping of bees is regulated under the Alberta Bee Act and associated regulations. Registration with the province is required for all hives by the end of June each year, regardless of their scale of operation. Beekeeping is currently an allowable discretionary use in the MD of Bonneville in our agricultural districts as per the Land Use Bylaw, Section sixty-nine. More specifically, beekeeping is included under the definition of intensive agricultural discretionary use category. Other municipalities within Alberta have varied requirements for beekeeping as shown in Appendix A. The attached presentation details some of the nuances with the varied, varying methods used throughout Alberta and their possible implications within the MD of Bonneville. I'd like to introduce Scott Purich. He is the MD's new planner, and he will provide the presentation.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning. All right, well, to start off, thank you, Reeve and Council, for this opportunity to talk and provide information regarding beekeeping and its future within the MD of Bonneville. So moving on, I would like to start off with a little bit of information regarding the habits and behaviors of bees. While bees may fly out a certain distance from the hive for foraging, for food, there are steps that can be taken to reduce the distance they travel. For example, keeping a clean source of water nearby may deter bees from searching for other sources of water, such as creeks or the neighbor's pool. Honeybee activity is also impacted by the temperature and weather. If it's too cold or too hot, the bees will If it's too cold or too hot, the bees will limit their foraging, or they will not go out altogether on a rainy day. As you may have noted on the slides, on a typical day, bees will forage within a few kilometers of their hive. This is generally limited between one and three kilometers for well-maintained and well-cared-for So, swarming is the gathering of bees in an attempt to move to a new location. This may be due to limited space of their current hive, improper care, or other reasons. It is often a concern of neighboring properties. When swarming is left unattended, the beehive may transfer to the neighboring property. However, swarming is preventable and can be avoided through the list that you see there, the preventatives that are on the slide. If the MD of Bonneville is to regulate beekeeping within its boundaries, in some cases where a person keeping bees has failed to prevent swarming, it may require intervention by the MD or a local beekeeping group. So, allergies are another concern for nearby landowners, and the number of people with allergies in any specific area will change over a given time, right? As people move in and move out or nearby public gathering spaces, the amount of people with allergies towards bees is always in constant fluctuation. Honeybees have been successfully kept in many dense urban areas, though, including the city of Edmonton and Calgary, and as noted earlier, with proper handling and care, it is possible to limit the impact area of bees. Additionally, male honeybees of certain species are unable to sting, and those that are able to sting tend to do so only in defense of their hive or when provoked. Depending on the approach taken, controls can be implemented to protect adjacent landowners. For example, identification of allergies within a specific area around a property can be determined during the circulation process, so as we circulate, we expect comments to come back noting that someone has an allergy, and that will be taken into consideration. Additionally, development permits can be made temporary for periods of one or two years. This forces the applicant to come back, and we are able to reconsider some of the impacts and some of the influences on whether a beehive should be approved again, and what sort of circumstances are, need to be included in that. So, the importance of honeybees to the environment has become more apparent with recent years, particularly within rural Alberta communities. Honeybees aid in pollinating millions of crops. Additionally, it is estimated that forty percent of Canadian honey is produced within Alberta, indicating the importance that beekeeping has towards the economic aspect of the community. And so, from here, I'd like to provide some examples of how other municipalities within Alberta are regulating beekeeping and within their boundaries. The city of Calgary uses a licensing approach to regulate beekeeping. This allows for requirements and conditions to be placed on the beekeeper, such as requiring the applicant to undergo training by an approved instructor or course. This is something that can't be done if beekeeping is regulated under the land use bylaw, as all regulations and conditions must pertain to the land and not the user. So, license also provide greater control to the municipality regarding the ability to revoke a previously approved license, whereas development permits, the cancelability of a development permit is determined under the Municipal Government Act, and is a little bit more difficult for a municipality to cancel a development permit once it's been approved. However, a licensed approach requires additional resources on the part of the municipality. This can be additional people to implement the process, whether it be a new application process, additional enforcement, or the development or expansion of an animal control bylaw. So, it would be separate from the land use bylaw, and we would need our own animal control bylaw with all the regulations put into there for this license. Moving on to the city of Edmonton, it is similar to Calgary, it utilizes a licensed approach. However, it differs from Calgary in that initial applicants are limited to one hive per property. With good standing applicants who return, they are able to apply for a two-year based on the determination by the city of Calgary. This allows for reduced impacts on surrounding neighbors should an applicant be found unable to appropriately care for their hive, and minimizes impacts. The licensed approach still provides controls over the placement and number of hives, so similar to Calgary, this allows for the requirements regarding training and expanding on the revocability of the license as well. So, through my research, I found that most rural municipalities regulate beekeeping within their municipalities through their land use bylaw. So, separate from the city of Edmonton and the city of Calgary, most counties and MDs are regulating beekeeping through their land use bylaw. So, Parkland County, for example, through their land use bylaw regulates beekeeping, allowing the use to be permitted under agricultural districts. Smaller residential districts list the use as discretionary, allowing for greater control within residential centers, and they also regulate setbacks from multi-parcels residential, commercial, and industrial parcels. Moving on to Rocky View County here, they also regulate beekeeping through their land use bylaw. So, beekeeping that meets the district requirements of the agricultural districts are allowed up to three hives and do not require a development permit. And within certain residential districts, beekeeping is a permitted use and allows for up to be, three beehives as well, meaning if they meet the district requirements, they are guaranteed approval. And finally, they regulate setbacks for beehives and additional setbacks for public, or from public areas or gathering spaces as well. So, again, the municipal district of Lesser Slave River regulates beekeeping through their land use bylaw as well. Beekeeping is included under the primary agricultural operations use, which does not require a development permit, where it is permitted, where it is a permitted use under a district. The only time that it would require a development permit is when it was located within fifteen-point-two meters of a property line, road, or highway. However, it is discretionary use in all other districts, that's beekeeping. This essentially leaves it up to the development authority of whether an application is feasible within a residential area, and based upon the context of that area. Setbacks are determined by the districts in which it is approved, however, that may be expanded upon, determined by the development authority. So, if the development authority noted that they were within close proximity to another property or anything along those lines, they can expand on the regulations of the setbacks. Moving on to the county of Vermillion, so the county of Vermillion River, again, regulates beekeeping through their land use bylaw. Additional setbacks are determined based upon the number of hives allowed with beehive entrances, positioned away from adjacent landowners where possible. Barriers are required to enclose the beehives in order to direct bees up and away from neighboring properties. The land use bylaw also notes that hives are to be kept in a manner so as to not be a nuisance to any other person. However, wording is important, it aids in directing administration in determining what constitutes a nuisance. For example, bees are generally limited in movement within a certain proximity of their hive, so wording of the policy may allow anyone to come forward claiming a nuisance. There are also additional provincial regulations, so in the province of Alberta, the keeping of bees is also regulated under the Alberta Bee Act and its associated regulation. This requires registration within the province for all hives, regardless of their scale. Once registered, a premises identification number is assigned that allows the owner to access appropriate medications. This will also aid in reducing the impact on surrounding properties, as all owners will have access to medication to ensure that their hives stay healthy, preventing swarming, and other nuisances. Additionally, bees from outside of the province are required to obtain an inspection port, a report prior to entry into Alberta, as certain species are not allowed within Alberta, and also determines whether diseases or any other concerns would arise before coming into Alberta and infecting other bees. So, as noted throughout the presentation, there are generally two approaches to addressing beekeeping within a municipality. Urban municipalities are largely seen utilizing a separate control bylaw and a licensing approach to regulate beekeeping within their municipality. Rural municipalities largely utilize their land use bylaw to implement controls and regulations regarding beekeeping within their municipalities. I noted that it was generally done within rural municipalities through the land use bylaw, typically because it was a little bit cost-efficient, there was less demand on administration and on the municipality to implement new controls and new enforcement and things that would be taxing to smaller teams. I'd also like to note that honeybees are very beneficial to the community, and when properly cared for and maintained, the impacts on surrounding properties can be controlled or reduced. So, moving on to the recommendation here, I'd like to show the regulations under our current land use bylaw and an example of some of the proposed amendments that may be suggested for the, for an update to the land use bylaw. So, currently, beekeeping is only allowed under the intensive agricultural use, which is discretionary under the agricultural district, and permitted under the direct control district, number two Pine Meadows Farm. And that's largely all there is in terms of what's contained within our land use bylaw currently regarding beekeeping. There's no additional setbacks or any sort of additional requirements regarding fencing, location, anything along those lines. So, with the information above, it's being advised that the municipal district of Bonneville land use bylaw be updated to further regulate beekeeping as a use. Some example amendments include adding a section regarding beekeeping, allowing a maximum of two hives per property with a temporary third hive being allowed for a one-month period in order to manage hive for splitting or other reasons for managing. Applying specific hive setbacks, requiring a barrier around hives, locating hives in the rear yard of a property, and beekeeping would ideally be permitted, a permitted use under agricultural districts on parcels larger than ten acres, and it would also be discretionary, a discretionary use on country residential CR1 districts, country residential CR2 districts, and agricultural district on parcels less than ten acres. Additionally, what's not noted on the list there, development permits would be temporary for a one, one-year period. As I mentioned, this allows us to kind of have them come back and determine the impact after a year's time. We'd also further expand the circulation beyond just adjacent landowners so that we can ensure that there are no allergies within the area, and we can do that again each year as it comes back. And with that, it is recommended that council directs administration to prepare an amendment to bylaw number one-six-six-seven, the land use bylaw, that increases the level of allowance for beekeeping within the municipality. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Swager.
Yeah, thanks for that. I'm, I'm in favor of the beekeeping stuff. I just look at the proposed amendments, and if I just read them as they are, they're not, I don't think they would fly, because you're saying have a maximum of two hives per property, but if you've got a big agricultural property, they've already got hundreds of hives, so these, these are just proposed, but you're not going to list these, I hope, in the land use bylaw, as, as they exist now, because two hives, and that would omit the commercial beekeepers, right? And then the other question was the, the enclosed barrier. I only saw one community actually recommend that, and I'm not sure what you mean by an enclosed barrier, so. Does that mean the guy has to build up a six-foot concrete wall around his hives? I'm just being facetious, but I'm not sure what you mean by it.
Sure, through, through the chair, if I may. So, regarding these changes, these are not the total encompassing changes. Once we come back, it would be further detailed, as you mentioned, regarding commercial, how many would be allowed on a commercial property, or if that's an entirely different use, that may be a consideration. These are just some example amendments that would be added. Regarding the enclosure, so for most beehives within other rural municipalities, an enclosure was typically a fence of one-point-six meters, that was the average of, across most of the municipalities. In terms of like materials, there were no definitions or criteria regarding, regarding the material. It was typically a fence, though, that was mentioned. And then that way, it just directs the bees up, and they would fly over other adjacent properties to water sources or food sources, rather than flying through a property closer to the ground and coming into, having more contact with humans and adjacent landowners.
Thank you. Yes, Deputy Reeve Fedev.
Thanks for the presentation. So, what is the definition, I have a couple of questions. What was, what is the definition of a hive? Is it X amount of meters high?
Uh, there was, as I went through other municipalities, there was no actual determination of the size of the hive, because hives can change in size, right? You can have, if you have seen any of those videos, you have those slots, that kind of, so that can be expanded. So, once they come in for an application, they'll have a hive, determine the size of that box, whatever it may be, so the actual size of a hive can change back and forth, kind of. And then, that might be a regulation that we put in to limit or cap a hive to a certain size.
Right, three feet, four feet, and diameters, or square footage probably, right? So, three keeps coming up as far as three hives, and, and your recommendation is, is two. If you had two, would that be enough to sustain a micro-farm as far as them taking it to the market and selling it? How much honey does two hives produce versus three? I know, obviously, three would do thirty percent more, but just an idea.
Absolutely. So, through the chair again, sorry. As we had just mentioned, hives vary in size, so depending on how large and how small we want to go with hives, we can expand, again, these are only examples, amendments, we could expand it to, adjust to three with a fourth temporary being allowed for one month, but hives' sizes change, so it is possible to allow for two hives and still have the same sort of honey production as smaller three hives.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I, I would like to see changed is actually on the, on discretionary part of it, because every time it's going to be discretionary, it's coming, going back to council to do all that. I think if you make some recommendations, so then, it's not discretionary, it's based on your CR1s and CR2s, then you guys can take control of that. I think a permitting system is definitely like a must, this way, we, we know where these hives are, and just more for your record's sake than anything. I mean, I don't think you need to charge for a permit, but I think just so we know where these producers are, I think is, is important. But, thank you.
Why do you think forty percent of the honey are, actually, it's a stat you have, but why Alberta?
Through the chair, thank you. To be honest, I am not entirely sure why Alberta, that actually came from, that specific statistic came from the province of Alberta. I imagine it's because we're similar to our neighboring provinces, we're much more farming-oriented, right, in terms of the amount of crops that we're trying to produce, and so bees and honey is kind of a complementary use that comes along with that. It, one, it aids growing crops, and it provides another income source for farmers or even successful commercials. Beekeeping can make millions and millions of dollars as well, so it's a very profitable use.
All right, thank you.
Just a quick note on that, we did a economic development study a couple, three years ago, and that's what they found, it was from the canola and from the alfalfa. The alfalfa's a big thing, so I guess the, the taste of alfalfa honey is different than canola, and it's, it's, it's very solid after, and I guess this area in general has a, has a high, high production of good alfalfa honey.
Currently, right now, commercial beehives don't need to, commercial honey makers don't need to have a development permit, do they?
Uh, no. No, I'm sorry, through the chair. At this time, no. As I mentioned, our only regulation under the, under our current land use bylaw is just the intensive agricultural use, which is discretionary under the agricultural district. So we don't have any other sort of regulations or controls on any beekeeping at this time.
I was just going to make a comment about the mountain honey. I talked to the one beekeeper in the area here that did apply and he was getting about 150 pounds with two hives. And then I talked to the one beekeeper in Bonneville that applied. I mean, they try to keep the hives a manageable size. They're like two by two by, I think you've toured some of those bee places and those cone things that go in. So they're all basically about the same size, but they're making, the guy said 60 pounds of honey is pretty common for one hive. So that's pretty decent for.
I remember Fred used to give us honey and everyone would taste the honey and hey, where'd you get that? Must have had good flowers in Cherry Grove there at that time. All right, any other questions? Oh, sorry, Al.
I think Mr. Reeve, to council, just a couple of things noteworthy in the province. The honey plant out of Three Hills, Alberta supplies Costco Canada. So we are a big player in Alberta in honey across the country. A second of that is hive size. I'm not sure that hive size in terms of the physical structure is probably the best way to regulate. It's the number of bees. It's the number of bees that will determine the size of the hive itself. So probably going forward, it'll be some discussion in the land use bylaw as to the maximum of bees per hive, which will dictate how big the actual container is.
Yeah, that makes sense. Any other questions? That was a very good presentation.
I would add that it's Mr. Purge's first presentation to council. Thank you, Scott.
I also liked the 1976 Trans Am Grill Incorporated in behind.
I was hoping you guys would catch that.
All right, just looking for a motion, please.
Make a motion to accept this report.
All right, thank you, Councilor Slipchik. I got it right this time for making a motion on behalf of council that council directs administration to prepare amendment to bylaw number 1667 land use bylaw that increases the level of allowance for beekeeping within the municipality as presented. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie. We're going on to nine three, so 9.31. Bylaw number 1803, all right.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This relates to bylaw 1803, amending speed rate bylaw. On March 23rd, 2022, council gave through reading to bylaw 1796, which was the MD's new speed rate bylaw. This bylaw amended several speed rates throughout the MD, including several highways, hamlets and subdivisions. Over the spring, transportation and utilities began posting and changing signs throughout the MD, which has generated some comments and in some cases complaints from the public concerning some of these changes. Namely, Wolf Lake, there was a range road between, 473 between Township Road 642 and Township Road 644. This section of road was simply missed during the initial assessment and this stretch of roadway can be raised from its current 80 kilometers an hour to 90 kilometers an hour in order to match other nearby roadways. The second issue that was raised was Gurneville Road, Range Road 460 between the town of Bonneville, South Corporate Limits and the Kehewin Cree Nation North Corporate Limit to be increased from 80 kilometers an hour to 90 for the entire length of the roadway. A portion of this roadway to the south was left at 80 kilometers an hour due to the curvature of the roadway and pedestrian traffic common between Kehewin and Bonneville. Administration is requesting all three readings be completed at one time. Concerning the advantages and options, as stated, the Wolf Lake Road was originally just missed. It should have been caught and it was just missed, so this is, there's absolutely no opposition to that. The Gurneville Road speed of 90 kilometers was originally considered and rejected due to its propensity for pedestrian traffic. There's quite a bit of pedestrian traffic north of Kehewin and also there's some curvature in that road. So that's why it was left at 80. That said, following this request, I checked in with the RCMP, consulted with them on complaints of pedestrians at night or any collisions or anything of that nature. And they provided information that did not suggest there's an issue if we were to increase that speed to 90 kilometers an hour for the entire duration. The reference to the strategic plan is enhancing safety in the community and livability in the community. There's no additional funding needed as these signs have already been purchased and the majority have already been installed. And it's council, excuse me, it's administration's recommendation that bylaw 1803, being a bylaw of the MD of Bonneville, to amend bylaw 1796 be given first reading, that it be given second reading and proceed to third reading if possible.
Thank you. Councilor Crick.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve first reading.
All right, thank you, Councilor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number 1803, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, number 87, to amend bylaw number 1796, speed rate bylaw be given first reading. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, just a question, was the, I thought originally I saw the hamlets, the speed was reduced. I don't see it in here, but.
The hamlets have been reduced according to the original bylaw. So these amendments only relate to the two issues.
Oh, okay.
The hamlets have been reduced to 40. We do have, just for council's information, we do have a bit of a shortage on 40 kilometer an hour signs. So if you do observe or if anybody happens to contact and say that there's a sign that should be at 40 and hasn't been reduced, we are waiting for a few more signs to arrive. There's a bit of a shortage with just the supply chain issue. So we are getting there.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie. Need another motion or a second reading? Councilor Kraviev, thank you for making a motion that bylaw number 1803 be given second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie. Need a motion that.
I'll make a motion for third reading.
What's that? Okay, need consideration to go to third? Moved by Councilor Slipchik that we proceed to third and final reading for bylaw number 1803. Need to vote on that? Yeah, all in favor or call for the vote? Sorry, guys. Haven't done one of these for a while. Carrie, now I need another motion to go to third and final.
Make the motion, Mr. Reeve, to go to third.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Councilor Swiger, that bylaw number 1803 be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Nope, call for the vote. Carrie, thank you, guys. Nine, where are we? Nine, three, two, is that correct? Nine, three, two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This concerns a Riverhurst Community Hall request for a lockable dumpster to be provided at the Riverhurst Community Hall for the hall use only. On December 8th, 2020, excuse me, on December 8th, 2010, council approved a motion to develop a bin site at the Riverhurst Community Hall on a trial basis. Between 2010 and 2022, the bin site grew from one dumpster to five dumpsters located at the site behind the hall. On March 23rd in 2022, council approved a motion directing administration to relocate the Riverhurst Bin Hall site to the Hilda Lake landfill for a one-year term as a pilot project. Following this motion, signs were placed on the dumpsters to alert the bin site users of the incoming change. And the dumpsters were removed on April 13th of 2022. Ardmore, Fort Kent, Willow Prairie, Beaver Dam, Flat Lake Halls are, all currently have a bin site at or near their location. The benefit of providing a lockable dumpster to the hall is as follows. It'll provide renters of the hall a means for disposing of their garbage and waste after they've occupied the facility. If they, you know, if there is no dumpster there, they would have to make an 18-mile round trip journey to Hilda Lake, which is not ideal. The disadvantages to this are that residents who formerly used the bin site behind the hall may be encouraged to leave their waste or other large items off on the ground outside of the bin. We do see this at other bin sites throughout the MD. As mentioned in the letter, if approved, the dumpster would need to be located in a space that is away from where the dumpsters were previously located. There's no, it's, the cost is covered within the current 22 Waste Services budget. And the administration recommendation is that council approve the request of the Riverhurst Community Hall Board for the MD of Bonneville to provide a dumpster at the Riverhurst Community Hall.
Thank you. Councilor Swiger.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I, first of all, I'm still getting tons of calls on the move that we made a couple of months ago to remove the dumpsters. And it was a council decision to do that, but, so we're sending people a fair distance to Hilda Lake now, but it's only still open three days a week. And so, you know, I think we kind of have to do something, this one-year trial is causing a lot of people a lot of grief, so. I mean, that's for future discussion and I'll ask Caoo to maybe bring that up at our next meeting and we can have that discussion. Because I, you know, like I said, I'm getting lots of calls. And so people have no option other than going to Hilda Lake, which is 18 kilometers round trip and it's only open three days a week, so.
Well, why don't we finish this off and then we can.
So I'll make the motion, Mr. Reeve, to allow the spin site to be moved to Riverhurst.
All right, thank you, Councilor Swiger, for making a motion that council approves the request by Riverhurst Community Hall Board for the MD of Bonneville to provide a dumpster at the Riverhurst Community Hall. Any discussion on this? Deputy Reeve Fadav.
Yeah, I just, I think we should be all inclusive to the other halls that might want one in the future as well. Not just, you know, this one. There's other ones that are approved already. And, you know, this might get out to some other communities that might want one. And I think we should still make that available to other halls that might need.
I think all the halls have one, don't they?
No.
No? Who doesn't?
I know Cherry Grove didn't want one because of people were dumping stuff in there. But there's other halls out there. I mean, I think we only listed one, two, three, four, five halls. So I think there's more than five halls out there, so.
Oh, I just assumed because I remember in my area that everyone had a hall or everyone had a hall, but they also had a dumpster.
Yeah, so I think just, you know, in case that ever comes up, I think we, you know, we're okay with this. But I just want to make sure that later on, it's all inclusive to everybody.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve, any other discussion on this?
Damn, I'm just concerned that once we, while we approve, I'm going for the dumpster for a hall, we should provide dumpsters for halls. We put this dumpster up, I believe a lot of maybe upset residents might be just late in the evening dropping there. I'm hoping it won't happen, but I can see us having an issue with this. We better look at that other option.
Well, Riverhurst always had a dumpster as long as I can remember and then we just added to it, correct? Am I wrong on that?
That's the information I have, Mr. Reeve, members of council, is that they started sort of with one dumpster and then grew to a bona fide bin site location for waste services.
Just another quick question, so are you going to label a saying that, or is a hall going to label saying? Hall used only, they're going to have a lock on it, obviously, right?
We certainly will, we certainly will do that. It's expected that we might have some garbage left, you know, and of course, you know, public safety will be involved with that as will waste. And I think we can, we can sort of gauge how the problem, if it is a problem, manifests and if it's going to grow.
Yeah, the hall does a pretty good job of things there. They keep a pretty tight-knit area there. They do a great job.
And Mr. Reeve, I would point council to the letter written to us from Mr. Brown, the president of the Rivers Community Hall Board, where he's indicated that the dumpster would be locked.
Yep. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Yeah, do we want to talk about this now a bit or do we have time or does, what do you think, Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, it's Carrie.
Through the reef, procedurally, it was not added to the agenda.
Okay.
It would require a unanimous consent of council to make an agenda change at this point. And we, administration, would have nothing to add to the conversation. Council made a motion about three and a half, maybe four months ago on the pilot project at Hilda Lake, as this RFD indicated. It's entirely a discussion for council. We provided our opinion that the old gravel pit to quarter section, which is a half mile away from the Riverhurst Hall, was the appropriate place for a bin site. Council felt otherwise and as a result, council made the determination to move to Hilda Lake.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Swiger.
Yeah, thanks for that, Mr. Cao, but admin does have information for us. This is supposed to be a pilot study. I know staff's been getting phone calls. They're supposed to have been kind of documenting those calls and then coming back to council with presentation on, I don't know, going forward or whatever, just kind of the kind of feedback they're getting. So I know there is more information out there and so I will ask for future discussion if we're not prepared at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Hogan, can we have this on our next, next meeting? Is that too much to ask?
Through the reef, to council, because we're inside the six months, the first thing that's going to have to happen is council's going to have to have a motion by somebody to suspend the rules. The procedural bylaw requires that we can't revisit a motion within six months of it being carried or defeated.
That's correct.
So that'll be the first thing that'll have to happen. We can certainly bring it back. I'm not sure. I would have to check with our egg service or our environment department to find out what information we have to bring back. I don't know that we have any at this point in time. It was a one-year project, so we certainly weren't collecting information on the second and third month because it was a one-year project. Our opinion and our recommendation will be exactly the same as the first recommendation was, to put it on the quarter section of land that we own, which is one-half mile away from the Riverhurst Hall. I don't think that recommendation will change at all. So we can certainly bring it back. Council will be required to suspend the rules, to have that conversation. And then, and then from there, we can decide what the council would like to do at that point.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve.
Yes.
Yeah, we can suspend the procedural bylaw and then bring it back in two weeks.
Okay, do we need to suspend that at this council meeting?
No.
No, you could do it at the beginning of any council meeting? You could do it right now if we wanted.
Through the chair, procedurally, if you were to suspend the rules, you'd be suspending the rules for the rest of this council meeting as well. I would suggest that it would be appropriate to suspend the rules only for that item that you want to bring back.
Okay, Donnie, we can't go home early.
But why would we suspend for the rest of this meeting?
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to bring that back for next council.
Okay. All right, we have a motion that, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadav, for making a motion on behalf of council that we bring that. I guess we'll let her have some time to write that out.
Mr. Reeve.
Yes.
If I can, at least type that out, maybe just for the staff, if we can have the, where the calls are coming from? Because I know there's a subdivision right by the hall that they went around because they didn't want the dumpster half mile from the hall. But are those residents changing their mind if you can bring that back with part of your information? It'd be nice.
So through the reef to Councilor Crick, are you requesting that we reach out to the, to the community that had originally complained about the intent?
Just if you know, I guess, like you probably have, I'm guessing you have record of who's called, who's complained, some of them, and maybe you'll be able to answer that question.
Yeah, I think just based on the call list.
Yeah.
The concerns list?
Yeah, concerns list.
We can certainly have a look at that.
All right, once again, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadav, for making a motion on behalf of council that council directs administration to bring back information regarding the relocation of the waste bins from Riverhurst Hall to the Hilda Lake landfill to July 13.
of the waste bins from Riverhurst Hall to the Hilda Lake landfill to July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of council as directed. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Yes.
To Mr. CEO, this morning on the subdivision, the variance from fifteen to three to five, I made two motions. Is that not allowed? Is that different?
Carried.
In the, in the same meeting, absolutely.
Oh, in the same meeting, it's okay.
Items can be revisited in the same meeting. You can have something come up for reconsideration in the same meeting. It's once resolution is passed, and you haven't had a, and it goes to the next meeting, that, that resolution. But inside the same meeting, I don't have the procedural bylaw in front of me, but, but there can be reconsideration and amendments of a particular, of a particular resolution through the debate and through the discussion.
Don't you have the bylaw memorized? No?
Miss, Miss Severin does.
That motion was carried. Thank you.
I think we are nine, four, one.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
My apologies, I did not catch this sooner, and I should have. Ms. Counselor Faddeh did make a motion, but we already had a motion on the floor by Counselor Swiger for the recommended action that was never voted on.
Well, it says it was carried six oh.
Oh, was it? My apologies.
That's okay. If, if you made as many mistakes as I do, then we'd be throwing things. Good job. Good morning. Or is it? Yeah, still good morning. Yeah.
Good morning, council.
All right.
Okay, today, we are bringing requests for penalty tax cancellations. The M.D. Policy Number One, Zero, One, One Property Tax Penalty Cancellation Policy establishes a uniform and consistent approach for council to address property tax.
Could you turn your mic on, please?
Hello?
There we go. Sorry, let me start again. This is a request for tax penalty cancellation. The M.D. Policy Number One dot zero, one, one Property Tax Penalty Cancellation Policy establishes a uniform and consistent approach for council to address property tax penalty payments, cancellation requests in the M.D. Administration has received property tax cancellation requests for council's consideration. The, the requests are placed in one of two categories. Category one is request, requests meeting the criteria of Policy One dot zero, one, one, and category two would be requests not meeting criteria of Policy One dot zero, zero, one. Currently, administration has received penalty cancellation requests by four property owners. Of the four total properties, the requests are placed on two lists, requests meeting the criteria of Policy One dot zero, one, one, and requests not meeting the criteria of Policy One dot zero, one, one. The requests received are summarized in Appendix A. The property tax penalty cancellation, M.D. Policy Number One dot zero, one, one, and penalty cancellation administrative process flow chart are attached as Appendix B. Appendix C includes the requests and the tax notices of the properties. Administration consulted with the individuals who submitted the requests and received consent to disclose the complete requests except one. Reference, references to provincial federal legislation, the Municipal Government Act Sections Three, Forty-six and Three, Forty-seven. Recommendations is that council approve the cancellation of penalties in accordance with the M.D. Policy Number One dot zero, one, one as requested by property owners as follows. Roll sixty-three oh three sixteen, one, zero, three, two, in the amount of three hundred and three dollars and fifty-seven cents, and roll sixty-three oh three twenty-four, one, zero, zero, one, in the amount of a hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. And that council denies the cancellation of tax penalties in accordance with the M.D. Policy, Policy Number One dot zero, one, one as requested by property owners as follows. Roll sixty-one oh six oh four, three, zero, three, four, in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents, and roll sixty oh three twenty-six four, zero, zero, one, in the amount of a hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Council options. Option one, the council approves the cancellation of the penalties in accordance with Paul, M.D. Policy Number One dot zero, one, one as requested by the property owners listed as follows, and they were just previously read, and that council denies the cancellation of tax penalties in accordance with M.D. Policy Number One dot zero, one, one as requested by the property owners listed as follows, as read. Option two is that council denies all requests for cancellations of all tax penalties as presented. Option three, the council directs administration to bring back additional information on the tax penalty cancellation requests to a future council meeting.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve?
Yeah, thank you. I think we've worked hard on the policy to make it pretty clear and and fair for everybody. That being said, I'd like to make approval, sorry, option number one, as a, as a motion that we accept and deny.
Shouldn't we have two motions for this, Mr. CEO?
Through the reefs, counsel, I think it could be done as one. A two would probably be better, but it, I think it could be done as one, but I believe two motions would be better. One, the first motion to, to.
First half.
To agree to the, to the request, and the second one to deny the request of the, I think there's two properties that, that we're recommending that we actually accept the request, and there's two properties we're recommending denial. So I, two motions would probably be better.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I understand that, but there's no choice to vote one way or the other.
Correct. That's why I'm suggesting that two motions would probably be better.
I'll, I'll make one that will be one A, will be to approve the cancellation of tax penalty accordance with Policy Number One Point Zero, One, One as per requested a property owner listed below in Appendix A, and then somebody can make a second motion to deny.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Faddeh, for making a motion that council approves cancellation of tax penalties in accordance with the M.D. Policy Number One, Zero, One, One as requested by property owners as follows. Roll sixty-three, zero, three, one, nine, one, zero, three, two, in the amount of three hundred and three dollars and fifty-seven cents, and roll six-three, zero, three, two, four, one, zero, zero, one, in the amount of a hundred and fourteen fifty-six. Any discussion on this motion?
Mr. Reeve, just, it was just a question of our procedure here. I read the four letters, but there was, and I would want to read those four letters to find out what their reasonings were, and I'm sure your staff's done that, but the, one of the letters had no roll number or price in it, so it was a little harder to go through that letter and figure out, well, which one is this, and why? Do you see my point?
Through, through the reef, we have on the four letters, what we have redacted is what they have actually asked to be redacted.
I know, there was just, there was no roll number and no value, so it was just harder to figure out which.
There is roll numbers.
Not in the letter.
Oh, in the letter, I see.
No.
Which, which letter are you talking about, or looking at?
The one without the roll number or, or any, or any value. Is that the third one? I'm trying to find it again. I just closed it here.
Are they in order, Mr. Bespelko?
I'd have to check here. All right, let's see here.
It's just a small point, but it was kind of trying to go through the letters and figure out which, you know, what was the logic here, and is it the third one? Thirty-two. Uh, three, thirty-four.
Through the reef to council.
The second letter. Yeah, and there's, and there's three letters that don't have roll numbers, but they have property, they have real addresses.
Yeah, many, through the reef to council, many times when we receive letters like this, the, they're, what information should be there to make it very easy to tie the request to the actual property usually isn't in there. Sometimes when we ask for updated letters with the additional information, they'll supply it. Other times, the, the statement is, we've already sent the letter. So it's up to the, to my team to actually tie the letter to the appropriate property.
Yeah. Okay, just to get my point, though, unfortunately, that guy, had he put in the value that, you know, he was concerned about, it would have been easier just to follow it through, but I guess you guys have done your job.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
You guys know this is a real big step for me, right, about the taxes? Like Christmas, it comes every year, and I was opposed it for the last five years.
Carried, thank you. Looking for another motion?
Mr. Reeve, I just see the late payment a number of years for one. What's the, what's the reasons for all those late, every year late payments?
Through the chair, through the reef to council, because the policy does not state that in bringing that, that that's part of the policy to bring in all the reasons, all we did was we summarized the response based on what was in the policy. Many times, you know, all we know is that there is a late payment and not the reason why. Is that something council's interested in, in us attempting to request?
That's okay. So for those other late payment years, did he pay the actual penalty on all those other years?
I will have to check.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Mr. Reeve, my question is, if he didn't ask for cancellation for the other years and this year, like, what's the reason, just, or did he request other years?
So within, for the roll number ending in three, zero, three, four, so that would be the first one on the list, the previous time there was a, a penalty was in two thousand and eighteen, and it was a very, it was a very small penalty. It was a penalty on the previous penalty in September. So it appears that they just forgot to make the payment on the two thousand and seventeen, didn't realize till early part of two thousand and eighteen when we did the penalty, penalty run, and then they paid it all up in March of two thousand and eighteen. So at that time, those old penalties were paid up. Yeah.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I still just got to ask you about that. There's that second letter, the one that Southwest twenty-six, sixty-three, west of the fourth. So somebody, they purchased property the exact same time that tax notice were sent out, and they thought the law firm was handling the tax notices, or how does that go?
When properties are purchased, many times within, during that purchase, the lawyers will also make a adjustment in the purchase price for the taxes. Depending upon how the lawyers set that up, sometimes the, the taxes will be paid as part of the transaction, and other times there'll be an adjustment on the sale price, and the new owner will have to pay the full tax amount. At that point in time, it's up to the property owner to touch base with the municipality to get a copy of the tax notice. Many times lawyers will send us letters to say, hey, we have just completed a, a transaction. Unfortunately, we can't use that as an actual notice of a new, new purchase simply because we have to wait until it's registered at land titles.
Can I just ask, like, don't talk, like, generically, though, can you talk about this one?
Specifically through the reef, what is the question that you're looking, wanting the answer for?
Well, if you read the, if you read this guy's letter, I, it says, I purchased the property the exact same time that the tax notice were sent out to the landowners. At that time was, and blank, and I never received a tax notice for the property as I thought it was all part of the numbers that went through their law firm. I'm just curious what happened in that case.
So in that case, we would have received the, the property tax or the, the title much later. In two thousand and twenty-one, I believe, June sales weren't actually being registered at land titles till September. So at any point in time during the, the time that they purchased the property, they could have phoned the M.D., and, which is what's happening currently, because now we have a four-month delay in land titles. Property owners will phone us and say, hey, we've purchased the property. What we would then do is go online the land titles to see if there is a registered document against the land title saying there's a pending sale that's coming up, but it hasn't had yet been reviewed. And it's at that point in time when we see that registered document, we'll actually send a copy of the tax notice out, redacted, so they don't see the previous owner's mailing address. In this case, it doesn't appear that they made that contact with us last year at the time they purchased the property, for whatever reason, I'm not sure.
What, what, a law firm, do law firms contact you, or no?
Law firms will send letters to say that we've just completed a, a property sale between two parties, and giving us a, a letter to say who the new owner is. Unfortunately, because that isn't a registered document, we can't, we can't update our system immediately. We have to wait till the land titles receives the documentation, goes through and reviews it, and then registers it against the title.
Yeah, I'm just curious, though, if somebody, like, did this, this guy just screwed up, then, is that what you're saying? Like, he didn't?
I, I think the one step the, we would like all property owners to do is if they own a parcel of land, and if they haven't received the tax notice within thirty days, please call us. The, the reason why, I can't speculate as to the reason why this person didn't, didn't do that.
Well, everybody that buys land, usually you look into that right away, don't you? Or your lawyer, or your lawyer tells you to, so.
Sure you do, but the lawyer maybe was supposed to, who knows, right? I don't know. An lawyer does it, or he does it?
Mr. Reeve, maybe he thought, Mr. Bespelko, that the lawyer was taking care of it, and that's why he didn't contact the M.D. Like.
Yeah, I can't speculate.
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair to council, having purchased multiple pieces of property over the years, this is, the lawyer missed this. It's not the M.D.'s fault that, that, that the, the taxes weren't paid on time. This is, anytime you purchase a piece of property, I, I spend hours going over the, the reconciliation from the legal office to make sure that I've paid my, my, the taxes that were due on the property that I purchased. It's unfortunate that, that this landowner, lawyer, didn't have the numbers right. That's not the M.D.'s issue. That's an issue between the landowner and the person's legal representative who finalized the transaction.
Absolutely. All right, looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion.
For to accept this. Okay. Denied. Thank you, Counselor Sutrick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council denies the cancellation of tax penalties in accordance with the M.D. Policy Number One, Zero, One, One as requested by property owners as followed. Roll sixty-one oh six, zero, four, three, zero, three, four, in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six oh eight, and roll six hundred thirty-two, sixty-four, zero, zero, one, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two fifty-five. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for Carried. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Okay, we're gonna break, break for dinner now. Okay, welcome back. Mr. Bespelko, go ahead.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here with an RFD related to the Ardmore Septage Receiving Station. During the regular meeting of council on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, administration presented the Bulk Septage Hauling Study RFD to council for information attached in Appendix A. Bulk Septage Hauling Study RFD to council for information attached in Appendix A. This RFD contained the feasibility study prepared by AECOM outlining the condition assessment of the current Ardmore Lagoon and the necessary steps if septic hauling is, to this facility was to continue. After that presentation, council's motion was that council accept the bulk septic hauling in the M.D. feasibility study prepared by AECOM as information. And furthermore, the council directs administration to bring back the bulk septic hauling improvement options to the 2022 municipal budget deliberations. Due to budget constraints, the 2022 capital budget contained only a few bridge projects and therefore the lagoon upgrading was put off until another budget year. The continued use of the Ardmore Septage Dumping Facility has resulted in another significant sludge deposit in the dumping cell that, that is causing operational issues. These operational issues are now concerning infrastructure staff on the efficacy of the treatment process of the facility. On June, on June 9, 2022, the facility was closed to haulers as the transfer pipe was plugged and the level of the cell was extremely high. Sludge was visible on the surface of the cell and unplugging the pipe would only cause sludge to migrate downstream, to the downstream cells, creating the same treatment issues. Thirion Lagoon is open for haulers to use until the operational problems in Ardmore are mitigated. As the cells were desludge in 2021, the need for desludging the lagoon in 2022 is not anticipated, so no funds were placed in the budget for this task. The discussion? The AECOM Bulk Septage Hauling Feasibility Study Report attached as Appendix B details the improvements necessary for the continued use of the facility for both the hamlet and the haulers. If the, if the facility is to remain open for septic hauling this year, the cell must be desludge, the cost of which has not been budgeted in 2022. The anticipated cost for this is approximately $50,000. Currently, the op, the options for the facility are, one, close the facility to septic haulers indefinitely. Two, close the facility to septic haulers until suitable improvements are made at the lagoon. Three, reopen the facility immediately and continue to unplug the pipe allowing sludge to flow into the downstream cells. Four, desludge the cells and reopen the facility. Options two and four will require significant unbudgeted funds in order to reopen the facility and option three will cause future operational issues with the treatment process. There is reference to the strategic plan, goal three, objective two, determine where, determination of where sewer could currently be provided, phase one and phase two. Reference to provincial and federal legislation, provincial and federal, federal legislation both apply to treatment and discharge of septic. There's no funds in the 2022 budget and administration is recommending that council approves the closure of all sewage treatment facilities owned and operated by the M.D. of Bonneville to outside haulers.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So just kind of as an addendum to Mr. Bespalko's presentation, this is really a question of, this is really a budget finance question, is the Ardmore Lagoon was originally established for the, for the hamlet. Without the bulk septic going into the Ardmore Lagoon, the Ardmore Lagoon is perfectly fine, probably for decades. Given even, even with the anticipated growth in Ardmore, there's really no reason to do a lot to it. The issue is the bulk septic. If we're gonna continue to accept bulk septic and we're gonna continue to accept it for free, then the M.D. is going to incur a significant cost, probably not just in the desludging, which will become an operational cost and add operational cost every year, probably somewhere between 30, 60, 30, 70,000 dollars. But we're also looking at, at somewhere around a $2 million project to expand the Ardmore Lagoon. The Ardmore Lagoon, already I get phone calls regarding odor from the Ardmore Lagoon. Expanding the Ardmore Lagoon is not going to make it any less fragrant, it's probably going to only increase that. So the question really is, what was the original goal for the Ardmore Lagoon? And if it was to accept bulk septic, then who's going to pay for the increased operational cost and for the increased capital cost when we increase the size, it will be forced to increase the size of the lagoon? So, the options are, go back to what the Ardmore Lagoon was originally designed for and that was for the hamlet. Nothing more, nothing less. Two, if you want to continue with bulk septic, you could continue with bulk septic the way it is today and the M.D. would just bear all the cost. Or three, we could begin a program where we charge for bulk, bulk septic, which would offset those costs, either in terms of the operating cost and in terms of the long-term capital required, the $2 million to add to the Ardmore Lagoon. Those are really, this is really what we're here for today. We, this has come to council twice since I've been here, once with the previous council, now once with this council. We really need some direction from council because this, we now have residents who are being inconvenienced because the, the septic haulers are charging them quite a bit extra. We have Ardmore residents who currently pay for the Ardmore Lagoon through their utility bill, through the, through the sewage charge on their utility bill, but nobody else is paying for it. Septic haulers are charging, but they're putting it in for free. So this really is a question about what, what is your vision about the Ardmore Lagoon? Are we gonna collect some revenue from it to allow bulk septic? Or are we gonna just not do anything? Our recommendation is to close it to bulk septic and not incur the, the long-term capital cost. We have, the city of Cold Lake accepts bulk septic at $50 a load, so it's not as if there's no place locally for bulk septic to go. This, this is an impact on a lagoon that was never designed for the levels of, of, of septic that is now going into, into the lagoon. And of course, we're not charging anything.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll comment too, because I've been talking to lots of folks and, yeah, a lot of folks in the M.D. are kind of wondering what's going on because they can't dump in Ardmore and, and they're, and they're upset because they're gonna, they're getting an extra $100 charge now on their bill. And that's even, you know, haulers that are hauling from around Cold Lake. They won't haul to Cold Lake because they have to pay 50 bucks. But, but they'll, they'll, they're charging them an extra 100 bucks, they drive to Thirion because it's free. So we reopened Thirion because the Ardmore thing is shut down. Desludging apparently is only supposed to happen about every 10 or 15 years and they're gonna have to do it every year or two now because we're, we're overloading the system that was designed, you know, for the hamlet, the couple hundred residents there with, for growth. And now we're hauling, everybody in the M.D.'s having their stuff, or bulk of them hauled to Ardmore because haulers are doing it for free, right? They're billing the residents, but they're not paying the M.D. a cent. So it's free for the haulers to haul it to Ardmore. And so we, you know, I, I think we should have probably looked at the whole M.D. and said, well, where is the location? If, if, do we want to provide that service? You know, where's the best location? And I, right now, I'm totally against all these haulers hauling for free to Ardmore. Even if we charge them, you're still overloading that system. I used to brag about, to people, how great the Ardmore Lagoon was because there was no smell until they started hauling. They shut down Fort Kent to commercial hauling, I don't know, six, five or six years ago. And so everybody hauls to, to Ardmore for free. So it's just kind of, gotta do something about it and, you know, do we expand it in Ardmore, is it even at the right location? Or do we look at a level of service and decide that the M.D. doesn't have to supply everyone in the M.D. with, you know, a location? I don't know how that's gonna go either because maybe, maybe we do, maybe we should supply a location, I'm not sure. Definitely not for free and I'm, right now, I'm totally against Ardmore dumping because they're, it's, it's being ruined actually, so. The other comment, the town of Bonneville doesn't allow these commercial haulers to haul household sewage, apparently? Only Cold Lake. So Cold Lake charges 50 bucks, but again, their haulers aren't hauling there because they don't want to pay 50 bucks if they can dump for free.
Yeah, Deputy Reeve, Fede.
Yeah, it just seems like, I, I agree with you, Councilor Sutrick. A lot of the haulers or some, some businesses out there, you know, they, they pick up, they, they charge an extra $100 per load, but they pick up three or four loads, but yet they're not willing to spend $50 to dump it at, at the Cold Lake site. Doesn't make business sense to me to haul it all the way to, you know, like to Thirion if you're in Cherry Grove. It's just, you know, that's not all haulers, just some of them. Again, one of the problems is that the Cold, sorry, the Ardmore site was never intended for and designed for the extra spillage. What's happening is, like in this report, I also seen there was a lot of sand in there as well, which is the big source, so it's not just the sewage, it's other bulk haulers that are, that are using this for free. So again, I mean, you know, for a cost recovery, what kind of charges do we have to do to, to pay back $2 million? Definitely won't be 50 bucks. Is it $2,000 per load? I don't know.
Mr. Reeve, I'll, I'll just comment again. I, I, you know, I would maybe ask admin to kind of look at, you know, look at the entire M.D. if, if council decides we want to supply that service. Because right now I'd be just willing to say, no, let's not allow them to dump in Ardmore. But then that leaves Cold Lake or Thirion. I mean, Thirion isn't even normally open, I don't think, for hauling. I think it was just reopened so they could haul. But, you know, look at a map of the M.D. and say, well, if we want, if we want to apply this service to the M.D., maybe, you know, everyone's taxes have to go up a bit and they have to, we have to dig new lagoons or whatever. I'm not even sure if AEP or whoever looks after this would allow another, you know, major lagoon system. Cold Lake's just invested about 15 to 20 million in a sewage treatment facility so they can dump it into the Viva River. So I'm not sure, you know, what we're able to do.
You know, I, I think it all comes down to numbers. You know, the majority of these hauls are coming from, I guess, rural, smaller lots. So again, you know, I, just around my area, there's, there's potentially 200 lots and within, I don't know, 50 feet, there's a, there is a major poop line that's there. I mean, instead of spending $2 million on a, on a new lagoon system, why can't we tie in future subdivisions into that? That'd be a, you know, a far better solution than, than creating a lagoon system where everybody's hauling.
And, and we need that study though, right? I mean, we need, we need our admin to do that study and say, okay, if we, if we had a dump station somewhere where these haulers could haul and tie into that, and tie into that sewage line. Or if we start tying residents in who are like 100 feet away from that sewage line, how many, you know, how much would we help? Could be a lot of people around that sewage line that we could, you know, help out.
Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I guess the, the question for council before we start spending tens of thousands of dollars on studies is, I can tell you right now that to go build a new lagoon someplace specifically for septic hauling will make this $2 million disappear.
Disappear.
And you can probably add another four to that. We're probably somewhere between, and I'd certainly let Mr. Bespalko weigh in on this, but a new lagoon with AEP approvals, if you can get approval on a lagoon, because AEP is not lagoon friendly anymore. But if you could get approval, you're probably looking at a four to $6 million investment into a sewage lagoon that would be strictly for bulk septic. And I think before we go spending the money on studies, we'd have to find the, the appropriate piece of ground for it because the, the, the topography has to be correct, the soil has to be correct, you typically want a lot of clay, et cetera, et cetera. We are looking, we're, we're looking at several years and, and millions and millions and millions of dollars. Is that the business that the M.D. wants to be in? We have a, we have a place to dump right now, it's Cold Lake. It would be cheaper for us to give every resident a $50 rebate, every rural resident a $50 rebate to have a, on an annual basis than it would be to build anything. That's, that's just, that's just the math. So I, I just, I leave it for council and if you want to direct us to go do a study, we'll go do a study, but that, that, I would highly recommend that that's just, that's just throwing good money after bat yet.
Counselor Sutrick?
Is there any possibility that we can dump like in Bonneville system? Something like for Cherry Grove, it totally makes sense to dump at Cold Lake, but for Moose Lake area, that's a lot of driving to go all the way to Cold Lakes.
I, I would confirm, I, I will confirm with the town, but I understand that the town has closed their facility to bulk hauling.
Yes, Counselor Sutrick.
Yeah, looking at that AECOM report, it's not just the bulk fluid that's causing this, there's lots of material that shouldn't be going in there. So how do we control that situation?
So it's our understanding through the Reeve to council that, that some of the bulk hauling we're getting is not just a local septic hauler that goes out to, to a residence place and pumps out their septic and brings it over. We're getting camp stuff. And I, and I believe that some of this is, is probably coming from, from those related issues as well. If it was just commercial residential stuff, that would be one thing, but that's not what we're getting because we're free. Everybody likes free, so they come here because it's free. The M, the municipality can't afford free. We, we look at the, at the big picture of all the things that are on the plate here for the next three or four years, from swimming pool to roadwork, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know where another two, three, four, or five million dollars comes from to build a sewage lagoon when there is a place that accepts sewage right now for 50 bucks. I, it is, to me, the, the obvious answer is continue to use Cold Lake for 50 dollars. We could certainly figure out some way, either that the M.D. helps cover that cost or, or we don't. But, but there is currently a place for bulk septic to go in the M.D. and, and Cold Lake is happy to accept it at 50 dollars.
Can I just add to that comment? So, yeah, maybe cover the cost, but again, you'd mentioned Ardmore residents have been paying that cost for the last 42 years. So, you know, maybe, and I've been paying that, so maybe if all these rural residents are willing to kick in a little, little bit and we, and I like your idea, it should be dumped in Cold Lake, it should also be dumped in Bonneville. And I'm not sure why it can't be, but I think we should look at those two options and, and make sure Bonneville gets opened up if we need to work with Bonneville to supply, help with that service, maybe.
Yeah, Counselor Sutrick then, Deputy Reeve Fede.
So like on here, like most optional ones, they shut down auto-operated so that we would be forced to haul at Cold Lake then. But we still got a, don't we have to still put $50,000 to desludge Ardmore, at least repair that for the residents?
If we close down, through the Reeve to council, if we close down Ardmore to bulk septic right now, we don't have to spend it this year is my understanding. We have to spend it if we're gonna continue to accept bulk hauling. If we don't accept bulk hauling, it won't cost us anything this year, we don't, because it's not, it's not, it's not contaminating the other cells that deal specifically with the hamlet. It is, it is in the bulk septic, where the, the cell that you're using for the bulk septic, all the problems are. If we don't accept bulk septic, we can, we don't have to do anything.
So how, how old is the Cold Lake facility? So it's a top-grade, top-notch facility for sewage treatment. So we're all concerned about environment, everything. I'm willing to pay the 50 dollars extra to have a good environment for my children and grandchildren.
I think I would be very opposed to a tax from, from the M.D. on, on my tax bill while I'm, I'm still paying a service, I'm paying a service to a, a hauler that's gonna haul it. I think we, we put the cost on, on them. I mean, we're, I mean, last, two months ago, it was 280 dollars. I mean, it's, it's these truckers and these services that are making the money. I think, then on top of that, I have to pay an extra tax or, you know, like other residents do. You know, and then I think, I think there's gonna be some, some big pushback in regards to that. I think you let the truckers deal with it and let them pay.
Well, that was my comment on the 50 bucks I'll pay, that extra 50 dollars to the trucker to haul it, you know? And then if they want to price themselves out, well, you'll find a company, they'll, they'll be competitive.
Like saying, out of that 50 bucks, it's not just one load that they're hauling, right? There, you know, there's, that's two, three jobs that they're doing to dump it once at 50 bucks. So when you divide that, really it's only about 15 dollars per, extra per resident that they have to charge. They don't have to charge anything extra.
Mr. Reeve?
Yeah, you know, the comments are interesting, but that's not, that's at all, not at all what happened. Because the M.D. did put a charge about four, five, six years ago on haulers. We, we were gonna charge them, I think, 50 bucks in Ardmore. What they did is they charged every homeowner an extra 50 bucks, even if they had four loads, like four different, so they charged everyone 50 bucks. They didn't split it, they didn't divide it by four. And now, now apparently they've, yeah, they've increased it 100 bucks because they have to drive some of them, I think all of them now, because I think they've kind of worked, talked to each other. But anyway, about 100 bucks to drive to Thirion because of the mileage, when they could go to Cold Lake.
Yeah, I had a, I had a gentleman wasn't, wasn't very happy with us and the question was, why the F am I getting charged 100 bucks more to haul it to Thirion? My question to him was, why are you hauling it to Thirion where you're in Cherry Grove and you're just have to go down to Cold Lake? So it's, it's, these guys are, I guess, pressuring. have to go down to Cold Lake? So it's, it's, these guys are, I guess, pressuring us in a in a different way by charging, by overcharging some of these, some of these residents. So I don't know what the issue, I mean, I don't know what the answer is. But I guess it's been free for so many years that that's what they still want. But who's going to pay the 40 and 60,000 and $2 million that that we're going to need for an upgrade?
So then, if we're going to go this route, we should talk with Cold Lake, make sure that they are charged enough, and not just a $50 flat rate. It's a rate for tank size. And if they only got half tank, that's their problem. It's still a rate as per tank size. This way, you don't have to worry about weighing the trucks. Oh, well, he only got half a load. Well, no, that's goes by tank size. And you charge accordingly as per tank. So basically.
But that's their business.
Correct.
No?
That's their business.
That's if Cold Lake can do whatever they want, that's their business. So I just, I had a question for Mike. We got money for the lagoons years ago, and we had that project when we made that deal with the government. Do you remember how much we?
No, it was quite a bit of money.
It was quite a bit of money. We did both the Fort Kent and Ardmore.
Yes, both. We did one, and then we did the other one. Yeah.
Yeah. And then we got 55 and the Traffic Circle and Wolf Lake at the same time.
Was it like a couple million?
Yeah. Yeah. So it was compensated to the rate, you know, the rate. We got some nice facilities. And now we're overloading them.
The Traffic Circle cost us 2 million, but overall it was 5.4 or something. Yes.
Just for my information. So when did it stop that we couldn't quit us, spread it in our own agriculture land sewage?
That's a good question. Through the Reeve to council, it's been years since we were allowed to spread human waste on on land. That's been a long time. It goes back, oh, man, that's got to be 10 plus years now. I'd have to look into what exactly it was. But it's been a long time. We can still do animal waste on on fields. But human waste has been not allowed on land for, I can't remember, maybe Brian, Mr. Bespolko knows better, but it's been years.
So through the Reeve to council, to add to that, my last look at the regulations were that you could do it, but there's regulations, you have to register the site, you may have to incorporate it into the soil, you know, within 24 hours. It just make, the regulations make it very, very difficult and cumbersome for anybody to surface spread it. So it's generally just not practiced anymore.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Kravjak, or Counselor Kravjak.
Mr. Reeve, you need a motion?
I think we need something. Yes.
So the best option probably would be number two, then, you're thinking? What do you think, Mr. CEO?
Well, option, option number two has us bringing back options to council at budget if I, I was trying to. We can certainly do that. I guess the question's going to be, is council interested in going down that road and spending money? If council is, we certainly can bring back options for, I mean, the option is basically in front of us. There is a report from a couple of years ago. It's probably increased in value at this point. I think that particular was 1.6 million. I think we're probably closer to 2, 2.2 million now. But we can certainly bring that back for budget deliberations.
Mr. Reeve, number, to me, number two may just mean you bring back options. It doesn't necessarily mean it's budget options. It may mean that we look to the town of Bonneville and the city of Cold Lake, work with them, and to make sure those are viable options for, you know, for these these haulers.
But the city of, city of Cold Lake's open for business.
Well, they are, but they just, they are, but they just, like I said, put in about 15 to 18 million dollars into a new treatment facility. You know, there, it's within our municipality. Maybe we at least chat with them about it, make sure that, let them know what we're doing, and see if we can get Bonneville opened up.
But, Mr. Reeve, I think maybe for now, Counselor Swiger, the best option would be number one for now. And then we can always discuss if we need later. We can discuss in council, the whole, whatever. I don't know. So I'll make a motion to approve recommendation number one, option one.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making a motion. That council approves the closure of all sewage treatment facilities owned and operated by the MD of Bonneville to outside haulers.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Does that mean that Thirion will be closed as well?
That's what that motion would be.
That's correct. Through the Reeve and to all of council, all facilities, so Thirion, Ardmore, Fort Kent. Fort Kent was closed previously, but this would solidify that no facilities that the MD owns and operates will accept bulk septic from outside haulers.
And if I, and if I could add. And if I could add, I would suggest, and we don't, it doesn't have to be part of the motion, just, we certainly would do it, is if we're going to close Thirion as well, if we give them 30 days, we put out a notice that 30 days.
Give a timeline.
Yeah. Yeah. I, just, the motion will say close it, but I think we've got to give, we've got to give everybody some heads up. That was one of the pushbacks we got. And unfortunately, the way the situation was at Ardmore, we didn't have time to tell everybody in advance. But if we tell everybody in advance, that will also give Mr. Bespolko and myself some time to maybe reach out to the city of Cold Lake and the town of Bonneville. Maybe, maybe we can get some kind of reduction in rates for MD residents who are having their sewage dropped off. So that'll give us 30 days that we can make some phone calls and see if we can get, get something else organized.
Yes, Counselor Kravjak.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Mr. CEO, do you want me to add that to the motion?
It certainly wouldn't hurt that.
I think it's better if we do.
That the council approves the closure of all sewage treatment facilities owned and operated by the MD of Bonneville outside haulers by by July 31st.
That's fair.
Okay, you want to add that to the motion?
I think there's 31 days in July.
Yes, if you do not this.
I'm not sure.
There is 31, yeah, in July and August. The kids have extra days of holidays. It's not 30 days, it's 31. You know that poem, "Hopes and doubts"? April, June, and November, all the others of 31, except February alone? I learned that in grade two.
Okay. And also, I don't know about education for the public, too, because it doesn't cost, if you're hauling, like, it shouldn't cost each each person that's hauling an extra 100 bucks. You know, if it's 50 bucks charged, that should be divided by whoever's in the, you know, there's mileage, I understand. But I don't think the people have to pay for, each person has to pay 100 bucks extra to get their sewer hauled out. It shouldn't be that much of a difference.
No, Mr. Reeve, you're right. There is perhaps extra monies for mileage, but they try to get people within the area. So there's not much extra mileage.
Yeah, because they're getting it for free before. So I understand there's going to be a charge. But it shouldn't be, shouldn't be who knows what. So if someone phones you guys, you can let them know, right? We're going to get phone calls. Any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Cipri?
Yeah, I just want to say this is kind of a hard motion to make, but it's something that needs to be done. We can't accept the sewage there anymore. It's going to wreck the facilities we have. And a lot of people believe that they're they're paying taxes and they should have free sewage services, I guess, like build a dump for free. But in reality, the taxes that we pay for residential in the MD are low enough that it really doesn't cover the road maintenance even for our roads. So everything is subsidized by the, by our commercial taxes around here, so.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. We have 952.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This is for a weather radar access road. In February 2022, Environmental, Environment and Climate Change Canada, ECC, approached the MD administration seeking assistance with the tendering and construction administration of an access road into a new weather radar station located northeast of the hamlet of Cherry Grove. This access road would be constructed within an MD, within an existing MD road allowance, Range Road 412, south of Township 624, for approximately 600 meters, then west approximately 300 meters to the site through Crown Land. This design specification, the design specification, tender documents and drawings have already been prepared by SC Design, and the MD administration has received copies of all documentation. Funding for the construction and administration of the tender will be provided by ECC upon receipt of an invoice from the MD. The upset cost for the construction and administration Once completed, inspected, and accepted, the portion of this access road within the right of way of Range Road 412 will become MD property. It is the MD, it is in the MD's interest to ensure that this new road, this new access road is properly constructed to MD standards. There is no immediate need for added new capital funding since the MD will be reimbursed by ECC for all costs associated with the construction of this road to an upset, to the upset limit noted above. Construction will not proceed unless the tendered amount is less than the upset amount. Any funding provided by the MD would be temporary. Administration recommends the provision of temporary funding to tender and construct this access road, with all funds being reimbursed by ECC in accordance with the spending agreement. And attached is, for appendix A, is the spending agreement. Sources of funding. The upset amount of this project is $499,999, which will be provided by ECC upon receipt of an invoice issued by the MD. Temporary funding could be provided from cash flow reserves. Administration's recommended action is that council approve funding for the construction of a portion of Range Road 412, south of Township Road 624, as presented, in the amount of $499,999, to be funded from the cash flow reserves, and furthermore directs administration to manage the project on behalf of Environment and Climate Change Canada, and invoice them for the costs incurred in accordance with the spending agreement related to meteorological service of Canada, Cold Lake Weather Radar Access Road Construction.
Thank you. Yes, Deputy Reeve Faddeh?
Yeah, I think it totally makes sense. I know, in the past, they asked us to construct it. So we're just contracting it out, and that's, that's good. I'm glad we're going to be there to see that it's up to our standards. And it only makes sense. So I'd like to make the motion for council options number one, please.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Faddeh, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves funding for the construction of a portion of Range Road 412, south of the Township Road 624, as presented, in the amount of $499,999, to be funded from the cash flow reserve, and furthermore directs administration to manage the project on behalf of Environment and Climate Change Canada, and invoice them for the cost incurred in accordance with spending agreement related to meteorological services of Canada, Cold Lake Weather Radar Access Road Construction. Any discussion on this motion? Yes?
I mean, I guess I'm in favor. Just seems strange that we can just pull this out of our cash reserves, and it should have been budgeted for, even though we'll get the money back, hopefully, right? I don't know. Is it an in and out right away?
Yeah, but it didn't come up during the budget or before the budget, did it?
No, I'm sure it didn't.
So how would we have it in the budget?
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. Like, would, normally, if we had a request like this, wouldn't we just say, well, we'll have to wait till the budget cycle and put it into our budget, or just ask them? Any other thing that comes up, we'd say we don't have, we haven't budgeted for it?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Swiger's question, as this was given to us in February, budget's already been completed. However, this is a in and out, where the MD wouldn't be out any money. We wouldn't have to fund this as a project for the MD with, with it not being recoverable. We can fund it from cash flow reserves, which we take out $500,000, put back in $500,000 fairly quickly. It's, to me, it just, as it's not going to affect the end, the end number at the end of the budget season, it would just be, like I said, in and out without it being, without it having any effect on our cash flow for the MD.
Okay. You know, that's probably fine. I just, you know, just bringing up the the point, we did this a couple of years ago with the Department of Transport. They said, can you cut our grass for us? Because we're in a bind. So, you know, T and you did that. They cut grass for the province, and I don't think we ever did get our money back.
Well.
Different issue, I guess, but it still happened.
Yeah, through the Reeve, that that might be a different issue. We have the contract with the, with the, it's actually with Her Majesty, the Queen in Right of Canada, that they are going to pay us this back. So I, the Queen signed it, I guess, so.
Well noted there. So we're going to take it up with the Queen.
It's all good.
If it don't happen.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, then.
We trust you, Brian.
Kerry, thank you. On to 961, council invitations. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So this particular one is in regards to the Bonneville and District Chamber of Commerce Texas Golf Scramble in support of Ronald McDonald House charities. It is scheduled for August 5th of 2022. As a Platte member with the Bonneville Chamber, the MD gets one free team of four players for the corporate challenge Texas Golf Scramble in support of Ronald McDonald Houses being held in the Bonneville Golf and Country Club on Friday, August 5th. The registration includes a power cart rental, breakfast and/or steak dinner, activity, prizes, and a goodie bag. If council wishes to register additional players for the scramble, the cost for chamber members is 90 for nine, or $135 for 18 holes per person. Attached is the, is the flyer that they sent with this, and our administrative recommendation that council approves registering a golf team for the Bonneville District Chamber of Commerce Texas Golf Scramble to be held on August 5th, 2022.
You're going to be quite a golfer someday, Don.
You're getting better, Josh.
Just looking for a motion. Yes, Counselor Swiger?
Yeah, I'll make a motion as per recommended. Put in a team.
Thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making motion on behalf of council that council approves registering a golf team for the Bonneville and District Chamber of Commerce Texas Golf Scramble to be held on August 5th, 2022. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Kerry, thank you. On to 962.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. 962 is regarding the Cold Lake Chamber of Commerce appreciate, member appreciate, appreciation barbecue on Wednesday, June 29th, 11:30 a.m. to 1 p.m. There is no cost to attend. We just need to RSVP as to how many people would like to go. Unfortunately, I would also remind council that June 29th is also the day that was scheduled for strategic planning.
Just good, yeah, quick question in regards to strap rallying that's starting at 9:00? It should be over in a couple hours?
That is entirely up to council, how long it actually takes. I would suggest that, given the information that I've sent out to council over the last couple of weeks, we would certainly like to see coming out of that enough details that we can begin to create the actual glossy, the actual document itself. So I would suggest that two hours is probably
Well, it's pretty hard to RSVP to an event if we, if we're busy that day, so.
Well, we already postponed our thing once already. Will it help if we move the?
We can't go.
Strategic planning up an hour to start at eight. Could we do that?
Well, we may, we may need more than three or four hours.
It's just, yeah, we'll be, we're, we're going to be, that's a pretty important meeting we have and we're going to be cutting it on time. I don't think that'll fly.
No.
I don't think it's proper.
No.
It's just too important of a meeting to be just kind of, we got to get out the door by a certain time. It's just, we have to just get ahold of the chambers and sorry, we had this meeting and we already postponed it once and just tell them sorry and we'll try to make it next year. I don't know if that's what you guys think.
Yeah.
All right, do we need a motion of some kind to, or just, what do you think, Al?
A motion to accept for information.
All right. Okay, Counselor Crick?
I'll make the motion to accept for information.
Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion to accept this as information. Any discussion? Did I word that properly? Probably not, eh? Let's wait till it gets up there. It'll probably be worded a lot better than when I said it. Sorry, Jolene, I kind of rushed that one. Here we are. Moved by Counselor Crick on behalf of council. The council accepts Cold Lake Regional Chamber of Commerce Membership Appreciation Barbecue as information. Thank you, that sounds a lot better. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Kerry, thank you. Correspondents' Information, back to you, Al.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So the correspondence that is in the package today, a letter from the town of Fox Creek to the Minister of Justice supporting Royal Canadian Mounted Police. We'll see if the news reports of yesterday impact support of the RCMP regionally. Minutes, the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority Committee Meeting, draft minutes from the BRFA Committee Meeting, letter from Community Futures Lakeland, letter from MP Stubbs, and, and I guess the council action report.
All right, whoever would like to start, go right ahead.
I just wanted to mention about correspondence.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention...
I need a motion to, sorry. Yeah.
Correspondence reports if we're going to reply to MP Stubbs, ten point five.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll just comment too, you know, it's important for her to look out for us and she's asking us specifically to kind of get involved and I thought it was a worthy, you know, something worthy to write a letter on or whatever, but...
Yeah, it's, they want to know our top three priorities that are, for basically preventing us from, that we need, the top three things we need for economic development in rural areas. It's definitely, I think, something we should reply to, so...
And through the Reeve to council, we certainly could respond to the letter. I guess what council would have to tell me for the letter to be drafted is what are your three most important rural priorities?
Well, one would be fixing Highway twenty-eight so our, our vehicles don't fall apart every time we drive down it.
And through the Reeve, I would suggest that this is, this is the Member of Parliament, and I'm not sure that Highway, that, that, yeah, this, so I, I think the issues that she's asking about are probably more, more federal than they are, than they are local. Much as Highway twenty-eight is an important issue, Member of Parliament Stubbs would have no...
She, Mr. Reeve, Mr. CEO, what she may have, though, input is into a, a federal transportation strategy because there isn't one.
Yep.
You know, we have no rail, or we have no rail system because no one, no one's looking out for us. They pulled that out some years ago. Our highway systems probably aren't all that great across Canada. We don't have a transportation plan. But she's also asking for attendance to a forum, so I'm not sure what, what that's all about, but...
Would she be someone we'd reach out to about maybe assistance with our airport? Because we got no industry like that's going to help improve our industry if we can expand that airport and upgrade it. That'd be a federal, wouldn't it?
Could, but absolutely, if, if, I, I would probably suggest to council that Counselor Swiger probably covered that with a transportation plan. That would be railroad, air, ship. We don't have ships, but, but air, road, and rail would, I think would be part of transportation strategy. Deputy Reeve?
Yeah, I think there's going to be also extra stress on our road systems that, you know, the federal government has announced a four-point-two billion-dollar NATO commitment that they're, that they're doing to upgrade their, like, weapon systems. So I don't know what kind of impact that's going to have, but definitely some, some tourism on, on projects on the federal side, especially since we're so close to CFP and the Mayo that will provide them, I guess, good recruitment and, and keep people here, so I think that's something we should ask for.
And, Mr. Reeve, maybe the, the transfer payments also that go to the federal government from Alberta? I don't know if she's interested in looking at that, but, I don't know, not sure.
Why don't we think about it and on the twenty-ninth, bring our ideas to, and then we can give them over to Al on the twenty-ninth. So let's think about it for a couple of days and then we could, you know, and Al might have some time to digest a few thoughts and then we can give her some, then we can write a letter.
Yeah, Reeve, I'll ask the new Economic Development Officer to weigh in his, his professional opinion on it since he's been in the area for a while as well, so, thank you.
I would also suggest to council that we probably want to include in the letter federal support for, for the oil and gas industry. That seems to me to be, I'm sorely lacking.
Exactly.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, it'll give us a few days here to digest, all right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. We need a motion to accept that, correct?
I'll make the motion to accept all the correspondence as information.
All right, thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making a motion that council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through, I don't know how many there is, one through four, or one through five, six. Any discussion on this? We already had some, so seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Kerry, thank you. Oh.
What is that?
It went away a little too fast there. Kerry, thank you. All right, council reports, whoever wants to start, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll start.
All right.
Just because the book's open. Well, so the first one was June eleventh, Lieutenant Governors of Alberta Artist Awards in Laclebiche, and so I did attend with my wife. It was at, at the college, or Prudash College in a theatre there, and it was a super event. They had great entertainment and they had Lieutenant Governor Salma Lecaney was there presenting awards to three recipients from Alberta. And I guess I was just impressed that Laclebiche had kind of reached out, or Portage College had, and they actually were able to host this event, so it was a real classy event. It'd be, I mean, I just wish we had a venue here that we could host something like that and apply for it because it brought in lots of people and was a really nice event to, to see, so. Munich Corps Meeting, thirteenth of June, they're talking about, they've replaced about five hundred signs within the municipalities along their trail. They talked about a, an app that they've, they're working on called Outer Spatial App. They're paying about three thousand dollars to have that app developed and it's kind of one of the apps we talked about that we could maybe partner with them on that kind of gives local folks information, or people come into the area, information on trails and, and sort of local sites and stuff. There's discussion about the Munich Corps folks are actually going to come to council and present, just about what, what they're working on, on the trail systems, that sort of thing, and I think they were going to also talk a little bit about that app to see if maybe the MD's just interested in seeing what they're doing. On the fourteenth of June, I attended the Integrated Watershed Management Plan, IWMP, at the C2, and that was probably draft, I think draft two or draft three of this big plan that they're working on. Lots of input from, from residents, and it's a plan that's going to help the MD too kind of going forward with, like, things like planning development and setbacks from water and setbacks from lakes and streams and just how, how the municipality can better look after their, their water systems. So I guess it's going to be a worthwhile document to have. Fifteenth of June was the staff safety meeting and I appreciate CA Hogan allowing council to attend that. Just kind of nice to get out and visit the folks. I think that was a good event. Seventeenth of June, Alberta Care in, in Laduke. And Alberta Care Coordinated Action for Recycling Enterprise, so they, they actually started off, developed in this area for a few, few local folks, been going on for, I don't know how many years, council, they have like thirty years or something, but, yeah, they're looking after recycling and they kind of lobby governments and, and help, help us with all our recycling. They talked a little bit about this extended producer responsibility and how that's, Alberta's the last province to sign on to that, but they're talking about circular economies and how the producers of, manufacturers or producers of products, it's kind of, should be taken upon them to be responsible for that product at, at its end life, so, and, and it's not, maybe it going that well because it's a new program, but they have one manufacturer who said he produces like shampoo bottles, but he wants somebody to collect them all and then send them back to him and he'll refill them or recycle them or whatever, but there's all kinds of discussions about that because there's hundreds of different products like that. It's going to be hard to deal with, but anyway, that's kind of discussions they're having. They had a little bit of discussion from Tom Moore, and Tom Moore runs a landfill just north of Edmonton, and he recycles all the plastic, he, he collects it and shreds it, and then he supplies plastic manuf, or guys who make plastic lumber in, just around Leftbridge. And, but apparently right now there's a, about a six-month waiting list for plastic. There's apparently a, a lack of it, and so these guys can't get enough plastic to make their lumber. But, so we had lots of discussion about that because I said, well, lots of, lots of folks are just landfilling it and lots of people who collect it don't even collect all the clam shells and different things that this guy will actually take, and Edmonton's home is to him now too. So he just built his own shredder system, they shred it and they ship it and he makes money doing it. Twenty-first of June, RJ LaLonde Indigenous Peoples' Day. So Counselor Slipchak and I attended that, that morning, about ten o'clock in the morning. We, they had a pipe ceremony, tobacco presentation, they had a little bit of a meal for us in the teepee there and, and so that was kind of a nice, you know, we had Bonneville there and we were there and, and just kind of nice to be with them, and then they had, of course, all the dancing and stuff going on in the, in the arena that day for lots of school kids. So that was it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Swiger.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reeve. We had a police meeting. Of course, both Cold Lake and Bonneville are very busy. Cold Lake had nine hundred and seventy-five files created, and they, they initiated a positive ticket for youth where the, if you see a person riding a bike, they wear a helmet, you put your name in a draw, and they have three fantastic prizes. Bonneville RCMP, six hundred and sixty-seven files, and they've attended some local events with students, very nice to hear. Went to the staff barbecue and safety presentation by Mr. Howe, was an excellent presentation for the staff. BRFA, you have the, the minutes there, but we're starting to have face-to-face negotiations with AHS with regards to EMS negotiations, that's going to be on Monday, and I think we're going to Edmonton for those. Also went to the Goodrich Fire Department barbecue, and the next day on the eighteenth, Goodrich Forage Club supper and a live auction, so that's all for me, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crick.
Welcome.
Counselor Slipchak?
Yeah, I had a large board meeting, June thirteenth, and it was a good meeting, a lot of producers are real happy because it was after all the rains and they're seeing their pasture crops improving and everything, so continue to hope for good rains and sunshine. Also, we're going to be having, never, not to forget, our Field Day, July twenty-first in Fort Kent, and there's one in Laclebiche on July twenty-seventh, St. Paul, August fourth, Smoke Lake, August tenth. I'd like, it'd be good for us to attend if we all could, for support our agriculture industry. And also Indigenous Peoples' Day, we went to yesterday, I found that very interesting and informative, and it was nice to see the stands filled with a bunch of school students have come out from other schools to help show their support as well and that, so that was very nice to see. And also attended, oh, the staff barbecue with Mr. Howe. I found him to be a very power speaker, like, say, his, his message was really resonant. I've heard a lot of safety messages through all my years, and his really, really seemed to, was a strong one, and I would recommend his, him to anybody regarding safety. And the Ronald McDonald Charity Golf Tournament on Saturday, got rained on a little bit, that was very entertaining, and I was a little exhausted by the end day teaching everybody how to golf, but it was a very good day. I had a lot of, got a great time with the staff and it was a lot of fun.
Thank you, Counselor Pinocchio. Sorry about that. He did pretty good for his first time golfing, I'll have to give him that. Counselor, sorry, Deputy Reeve Fedeau?
Yeah, thank you, just a couple of events, but FCSS and Cold Lake, that was a good meeting. We kind of went over, they have five hundred income tax forms that they helped out with. Usually it's about three hundred people, but because of all the SERB cutbacks, people are kind of struggling, you know, how to deal with their tax forms, so it's a great service that they provide. Lots of, lots, lots of things went online, so a lot of these people that don't have ID need ID assistance, so there's about twenty-three people that partake in that service that FCSS provided in Cold Lake. Special Transportation, they bought a, they bought a brand-new bus and it's, it's pretty good, so some of the seniors are confused if they should still wear a mask or not. There's been a lot of, like, the mask, it's been lifted, so, but everybody's still kind of confused to, to what to do, so they said if you want to wear a mask, then wear a mask, right? So that's about it. The Meals on Wheels have been a real issue. When there was a grant received by FCSS, the Meals on Wheels was subsidized to five dollars, you know, per meal, now, now, like, now they're back up to twelve and there's a lot of people that are dropping off that program and they're having real struggles finding somebody to cook it, you know, cook like a home meal. And there is a company out of the base that shut down their doors and they don't do that anymore, so I just really commend FCSS for trying to provide a good, good meal for people. Didn't make it to Alberta Care, ended up, my daughter ended up in hospital, so kind of, I'm glad that Counselor Swiger went, so it's all good. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau. Counselor Crick?
So at a BRFA meeting, that was mentioned already on Thursday, and then it's not my committee, but I went to the Bonneville Chamber of Commerce, their business partner, lunch on Thursday last week, that was a good lunch. Then I was also at the Integrated Watershed Management Plan with LIKA, and that one actually I'd like to ask for a short in camera, just have to do with intergovernmental agency stuff, so, but you can finish this first. And, yeah, that's about it for me for this last couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick. I attended the Bonneville Friendship Gala fundraiser, it was okay. I was there with Counselor Fedeau, Deputy Reeve Fedeau and Mr. Al Hogan. Also had a police committee, and I think Counselor Criviac went through that quite well. We got to tour the whole facility here in Bonneville and never was in the back like Mike, so it was the first time for me seeing that. The staff safety meeting was a great success, and when you sit back and you look, we, we covered half of the field house in the C2, there's a lot of employees, and it's good to see everyone is out there laughing, communicating, and kudos to all the cooks and whoever had a hand in doing all that, that was a lot to put on and they did an awesome job. It was an awesome meal that they put together and the guest speaker was very powerful, I'd have to agree with you, Counselor Slipchak, he was very, he really made you, you know, think and go...
he was very, he really made you, you know, think and going home, I was looking for my phone and I was gonna text somebody and I'm like, no, not today, so I threw, I really, his words meant a lot and tried to listen. I probably have texted once or twice since then, but, man, it's not, not wise. We had a B F R A board meeting and it was, you guys had lots to say about that already, the Goodridge Fire, I attended that with Counselor Criviac, just one thing that I, I got from that is they, after it was done, they would, they picked cards and they ripped cards in half and they had a draw, I'd never seen that before, because usually when you have an event like that, there's all this food left over and you're wondering what to do with it, and so they, they just bundled four items at a time, some steaks and stuff, and everybody got to go home with a little, little bit of food and I thought, what a great idea, so it's not wasted, and, you know, because what do you do, the person left there is all left with all this food and they don't know what to do with it, a lot of that gets wasted and it was just a great idea that they, and I had a great time there at that. And then the, the following night, I was invited to the Four-H at Goodridge and also Counselor Criviac was there and they had a stellar meal and again, they, the kids, they, instead of just giving the food away, they, they actually auctioned it off for, like, a fundraiser, so they would, there was a great little auction and then I have to say thank you to a lot of the greenhouses in the area, I don't remember the names that donated, but they donated flowers and then they had a auction to go to the stalleries, I believe, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the stall, went to the stalleries, possible, so what a great, a great thing that happened at Goodridge, and then I have to shout out to a couple of kids there, I think it was a young Yance boy and a young Robinson girl, like, they were, they are delivering all the items that got sold, they went all night, like, for an hour straight, I think those kids. And then there was a girl on stage, the leader, do you know what name, what her name was? What was the leader of the Four-H club there, what family is she from? Anyway, that girl did an awesome job running, like, she did, she was presenting and she was, forgot her name, though, but anyway, whatever her name was, she did an awesome job as, I, I believe she's the leader of the, the, the Four-H group, for the kids, anyway, can't, if I remember.
Do you mean Lorena, Lorena Hagan?
Maybe, yeah.
She was the one writing all the things down?
No, the, the young lady that was up on stage, the Four-H member, man, I can't remember her name. Anyway, apologize, but she did an awesome job conducting the whole thing, and then all the volunteers for the Four-H, I just, I was a member of Four-H for years and it takes a lot of work and they did an awesome job, so I, kudos out to Goodridge. Went to the Ronald McDonald Charity Golf Tournament, it was great, there was eight of us and we were well represented, everyone did an awesome job and it was for a great, great cause and I had a lot of fun with the group from the Four, from the M D, and that's all I got.
So I guess I need a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Counselor Slipchak. Call for the vote?
Please be to it. Can the person vote no like that? Can the person vote no?
Just to make sure it works, because it may not work.
Yeah, maybe.
Kerry? Okay, welcome back. Al, what do we have now?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, I think it's just the one motion coming out of the closed session, directing administration to set up a meeting with yourself, the Mayor of Glendon and the two C A Os.
That's correct, thank you. Mr. Hogan, looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Slipchak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council directs administration to schedule a meeting with the village of Glendon as directed. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. You guys are, you guys are being funny, are you shut your computer off already? Okay, all in favor? Kerry, thank you, it's Kerry. Yeah, look at that, she got it up there anyway. Anything else we need to adjourn? Thank you, Counselor Crick, for adjourned the meeting, all in favor, Kerry, thank you.